We're live.
Well, good evening. Um, this is an in-person um workshop facilitated by Nick Cruz and Jody Goldner. Get it right.
Yeah, yeah.
And today's Tuesday, September thirtieth. It's six oh five. Um, uh, today we're, we're discussing bylaws. Regarding committees, um, in person, we have, I'm Jennifer Perez, you have Maritza Estamira Benes, uh, board members online, including Keisha Casimir, uh, Rob Trayberg, Andre Woodson, Willie Medina. That's it. And then we have Dr. Avery as well, person. I'm gonna uh, turn over to and Joe.
Get to have dinner together every time we come down here. It's just great. And we're talking about baseball. Um, so, one of the things that has come up, and I'm, I'm, I'm gonna turn it back to you in a second, just to ask you to maybe help us frame tonight's work. But my observation is that one of the places where the board has probably not functioned as effectively as it can is in the use of the subcommittees. Yeah, there's some lack of clarity about the purpose of some of the work that's being done. Um, I would say with our combined experience of like almost a hundred years of school board leader or educational leadership, um, there are certain things that you can observe in, in the way things are running. And it seems like they're, you're using committees perhaps not as well as you could. Um, the reason that is important is one, and, and I kind of get because there have been some vacuums. And when there's a vacuum, somebody has to come in and fill the vacuum if it's a vacuum of leadership. But part of your charge from the state, part of your obligation to the district is to reinforce the leadership. We've got Doc Bravery here who can um, take the reins on a lot of things that may have been done at, through committees in the past because it had to get done. So I see our responsibility is to sort of help refocus the board on what do committees do? What are the best practices? Um, what is a good committee structure? What would that look like? I want to reinforce perhaps a little more sternly the impact on staff when committees are not focused on all the work or on the appropriate work is, as you might find, well, this is kind of about policy. So we're going to do it in policy. Well, maybe it really shouldn't be in policy. But so in the absence of any direction, everything becomes committee work. And the real structure with, uh, or the real frustration with that is your central office has to staff every subcommittee meeting. They have to fulfill the expectations of those committees, prepare for them, then the work that is generated by those committees has to be done by them. And that's a huge burden on administration. So I think trying to focus our attention by so trying to focus our focus, sorry. Well, the opening. I'm down on this. I'm glad you're here. This is a lot easier to do. You have to pick up Albert to try to take a little heavy. So, um, where was the, oh. We need to, we're getting started with the idea that we heard the whole thing. But once after the elements. Um, so I guess to start, I'd like to, and I was asking, do you think this is right? Is this really start to say, okay, what, what are the purposes of subcommittees? Um, what? What's your board structure look like? And try to determine if all of the work is relevant to the subcommittees or if it's something that's been there because it hadn't been done elsewhere. Um, I've done this exercise with other districts and a lot of times if you're right, and I plan on doing this with the different communities you have. Just what do the committees do? And then what is something that's really appropriate for a committee? What is, should be something that should be guided by policy through administration? There may be some of that now. Um, and it might not be something that you can go from A to B immediately, but from A to Z immediately. But maybe you have to do some steps in between because as I said, there have been some vacuums in the past. And as you overcome each of those, it might make for another step toward moving towards your ideal. Um, is Jen, I start with you. Does that sound like a, a good way of starting or?
That's kind of what we we talk.
Yeah.
Sort of I was leaning in.
Yeah, yeah, I, I've heard talking about this as well, looking at one of the major bold, we're really determining what, what is the goal of, what's the relationship between the Board of Education, full board and the subcommittees? Is the board's authority, what is the subcommittee authority? How is information provided to the subcommittee from the board? Who determines what the subcommittee should be working on and, and doing its deliberations on and his research on and some, you know, getting into the weeds on? Um, and, and, and how's, how is that information brought back up to the board? In its role as the, the, the board's role in terms of adopting what these committees are doing or considering, receiving presentations, acting on recommendations and so on. But I think that's a very critical component as well. Almost I, I think I like creating a mental map around the relationship of the board with subcommittees. So once you determine what the subcommittees are and what their charges are. A part of, a critical part of that is going to be now that we've determined that, what's the board's relationship with those subcommittees? Our information given to subcommittees and brought back up to boards, to all the board.
So, um, and, and the other thing, cause I know part of the discussion was revolving around the bylaws. But I think in, in our minds, that comes after you agree on what the committee structure should look like. Right now, there's a lot of policies, sometimes even contradicting each other. Some of them were obviously written to circumvent something that was abused in the past. And that's not really the best way of writing policy because you're fixing things that were broken. Rather than let's start fresh, you know, Jody made an example, pointed out an example of, you know, your policy several pages along. Farmington is like a column. Um, and do we start by changing all the fixes again, or are we saying, let's start from scratch? Let's talk about the purpose of all of the committees is A, B, C. Uh, even to what, what are the, what are the committees you're going to have? You know, do you need six, eight, nine, uh, Sheldon, a number of years ago, they went from nine to three. And they then took, and I'm ready to do that if it helps tonight. Each committee, what did they do? Well, if you only had three, and let's say one is operations, budget, um, personnel, et cetera, buildings, that's all under the umbrella of operations. Um, and frankly, I think sometimes a committee like that should have a lot to talk about because you're looking at the math world. Okay, but again, we have to sort of look at how things are done here. And, and we're not here to tell you, this is the only way you should do it. We're trying to help share best practices with you and help you come to consensus together on what you think best will work for you. Um, but we went through the shopping list and this is what this committee does and they had nine. So it took a while and they realized that, yeah, they only needed three. Um, operations, they call it teaching and learning, but an academic focused one and then a policy. And that was what they, and so then we took all the stuff that they did. What po, what committee should this go under, if at all? How many of these, and they had, they probably were dozen activities that they said, you know, if we have a policy that said this is what should be done, administration could do it and it doesn't even have to be a board decision. So, um, hopefully, because if you're spending all your time in board meetings and you have very long board meetings, I try to watch them. And I, I realize it's usually a block of two hours of the executive session in the middle, but not always. Um, meetings shouldn't have to go that long and really shouldn't. If you're policymakers and, and governed, you shouldn't need to do that much work. And your subcommittees, I know, are just compiled on top of that. And so, um, I'm wondering how much of a disconnect there is between what you feel obliged to do and what you have to do. And again, if we can help you get to a more reasonable place, that's why we're here. So, um, I guess I would ask, and, and forgive me, this, this is like the worst kind of meeting to have with hybrid. But we're going to do the very best we can. We want to make sure everybody has a voice. Um, but I wanted to just open the conversation. What, um, what do you believe committees should be? Or what, how do you envision a properly acting committee structure? Starting with, I think Jody mentioned it first, who directs the work? How does, or what is the relationship between the committee and the board as a whole? I'm throwing that out. Yes, sir.
I believe the committee, what we have is what we have in our district. Have to resolve the situation before we bring it up. But if we have the first, you know, we have a lot of things, of course, we have from nine now we have three. And sometimes we have three or four, from that three or four, that's why sometimes a committee is long. It's sometimes when we go BOE, we got, like you said, it's long because we, some people want to ask more questions to BOE. So for me, the committee is, is what we have in a district, what we have as a board member that work with Dr. Avery. That's what I feel like the reason.
Yeah. Yeah, I this is partially being a little pissy. Prefaced it by saying that what this meeting was about. And so any sort of ability to think about in advance. Did you, you know, this doesn't say, I didn't know. You're supposed to have three other meetings at this hour. Two other meetings in this hour and this got thrown into. So I'm just looking and frankly, there's something else I feel is almost depressing to me going right now. Um, so I'm, I'm like sort of, oh, well, this is an interesting discussion. I love meeting with you guys and having these discussions. Well, that tastes like, oh, wow, this is a great discussion to have, but wow, I hadn't thought about this at all. Um, so that's my pissy presence. I'm being honest. That's why we hear nothing but. So that's, so, um, you know, presumably our committee meetings are where we can get some preliminary work done for the full board. And I know from your point of view, our meetings are long. And lately we have had some executive session work that had to be done. And it, it has been legitimate. And we, of course, spent an enormous amount of work over the last few months doing policy work mandated by the state. Or, but as Jody said, was we were above the curve, but way behind, you know? So we have, we have fixed that and are now in this position to start moving forward. Um, and I think that's going to be sort of the purview of what happens post-November. Um, we're sort of in that pre-election phase. Um, so, uh, hopefully the board moves forward in a positive way after that. Um, so, um, let's cross our fingers to hope that happens. But we will then have a hopeful three, four decision about how committees, what committees, and they move forward in a positive way. And I heard you about having the discussion before you rewrite the bylaws made perfect sense to me. Um, so having said that, I, I think that what we've been doing is sort of streamlining things pretty well, frankly. Um, the only thing that I find it still very frustrating isn't in an abundance of special meetings. Unplanned for call meetings. I mean, I'd just like to see us get into a rhythm of having planned meetings. I've been trying to keep my committee meetings down to a minimum amount of time with some success, I think. But, you know, we just seem to have an abundance of, um, this special meeting after that special meeting and this one appeared to be another. Um, and that's where, you know, it's like, let's not have too many, let's get into a rhythm of we work these these days, these committees meet these days, and let's keep to a minimum. Any other unforeseen meetings. So that we, where people know when we're meeting, the board knows when we're meeting. Um, and so if we have, we set up what our committees are and what their role is going to be and what we're trying to do with these committee meetings. Um, and how we're going to do it and what our job is in these committee meetings. And we all agree on it, that we, we then are a lean mean operating machine.
Absolutely, absolutely. Which is kind of what we walked into tonight, thinking that's the purpose of tonight's meeting is start that conversation. You know, I know that the agenda said policies, um, bylaws regarding. And, and frankly, part of that was that our suggestion was, why are you starting to look at bylaws and wordsmiths? When you're not even clear on what the expectations are? And in my mind, a good policy starts with this is the purpose. And that's really where the board should focus ninety percent of its attention. The details are not as critical necessarily, other than I think there's been a history here of using bylaws to control behavior.
Well, the details, well, the bylaws will ultimately be informed by the discussions you have.
Right.
And, and so when you need to replicate it and to create that pattern of expectations and, and, and business, then you have policy that will guide.
And you're going to feel better about the work too. I see Andre's hand up. Andre?
I, I, I thought that, you know, ours, that our subcommittee meetings are kind of like redundant and no, I, I, I kind of like the way that Christine handled the subcommittee meetings where we're not taking everybody's questions during the meeting, you know, that the meetings were twenty to thirty minutes. We got business done, we moved stuff forward. You know, now we have subcommittee meetings and everybody's asking questions. Then we get to the regular, regular, uh, uh, meeting and people are asking the same questions, you know? We're not, it's like, we, we, we're, we're asking questions at these subcommittee meetings. We're not moving forward, we're not getting anywhere. And then we, I guess, you know, usually you ask questions. By the time we get to our regular meeting, we should be ready to move on stuff so that the meeting won't be so long. But they're asking the same questions over and over and it's kind of holding us back. Thank you.
Thank you. The part of it is really, and, and this is something, and don't feel like this is just bridge work. A lot of districts struggle with where's the line? Um, I know in my district, when I was board chair, I stopped having a curriculum committee discussion. Um, now called teaching and learning, but, but because then spend an hour and a half talking about it with the committee. And then they come to the board and then spend an hour going over the same thing. I said, that's redundant. And, uh, if, and something as important as academics or whatever, in my mind, is the work of the board. And that really should be something for the whole board. So we just dissolved that subcommittee, um, for the time being, and that was a committee in the whole. So, and, and again, that, yeah, Willie? Okay, you can finish your thought. Well, I was going to say, in my mind, that was a really good use of time because one, want to get the board focused on the right work. But secondly, we were, you know, keeping the staff busy because every time there's a subcommittee meeting, they're, they're dropping, just like they do for the regular board meetings and their special board meetings. And, you know, they're putting all the materials together to lead, to provide you the resources you need to make decisions. And
Yeah, Dan, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. I have, okay. Well, that's, that's a perfect example because I was aligned from the start of the meeting. Um, and one of the questions you guys, you guys had is, you know, one of the statements that you made was, you know, this will be more better for people, you know, when, when we're sitting out in front of each other, you know? That was your thing that this meeting just popped up for me personally, out of nowhere. Um, it wasn't discussed by the full board, it was just made up by people that made those decisions, but nothing was discussed with me as a board member. And to, to the, the thought that you guys were sharing, that's why I think some, uh, committees, so I want to ask, subcommittees, committees, what is the difference between those? Because I, I'm a man of words, so words matter to me. You guys say sometimes subcommittee, then you guys say committees. So is there any difference first of all between those two?
No.
Okay, cause you guys calling our committees, some committees.
Yeah, so the only difference, well, it would be that committees, in my view, can, from my experience, would, would also include like ad hoc committees. Uh, um, subcommittees, there, there are a variety of different kinds of committees a board can have. Um, subcommittees are the standing committees that the boards determine are necessary to, to do the work for the full board. So again, you look at, for example, um, operational management. So you have a subcommittee that meets every month on issues the board is concerned about related to operational management. Whether it's a budget or building issue or things like that. So, so the sub, so boards, boards of education have to exist. Every, every district has to have a board of education. Not every board of education has to have subcommittees. Subcommittees are designed to help the board do its work.
I point exactly, you're using the word subcommittees. I want to make sure that I can understand. And they used the word IHOP, which we were passing that word around because we want to make sure that we protect even the board moving forward. So your, your question before was, when I was aligned, was what is the relationship between, uh, the committees or subcommittees, you name them, and the board? And I think the relationship is, I don't know, again, I, I want to make sure I don't get lost in translation. To me, the, the committees that you call subcommittee are formed from the board. The, every board member has a committee that is assigned by the chair of the board as she deemed, you know? We make recommendations, she'll ask us, or the chair usually asks what committee you would like and, you know, be a part of. But that was my experience with two different chairs, uh, that I've been under. So that's what we did. But then, you know, the IHOP committee was something that I was, you know, trying to build through policy to make sure that we could protect each other as a board to be able to, because the relationship for me is that work gets done. Almost like what Mr. Woodson said at the end, very end, the only part that I knew was very end. So make sure that we all do all that work and all those questions be asked in some commit, in committee. Then when he goes to the full board, the work, all the person have been done. That's why I feel that it's important that all board members be allowed to shout speak at committees, that we can get those, that work done already. That will, we can, when we move forward to the full board, things are already done. Like, uh, if you guys, you know, look, that's what was happening when we got our new chair and we started working together collaboratively. Before the state was here, that we were, you know, stuff was done at committee. And when he went to the full board, it was just about, guys, we already did all the work, all the questions, anybody has questions, no, let's move forward. And it was just being voted on, it was done very, for me, efficiently. Um, so that's the, that's the relationship between committee, our committees and our board.
Yeah, I think we have to peel, peel certain things. So first of all, the board, the board as, as a full board determines what its subcommittees are. And those are the committees that do the board's work, meet regularly, present back to the board, make recommendations to the board. The board acts on, can question, you don't need to have the same presentation for the full board because it has the, the committee looked at it. And it was reporting back to the full board on the presentation, making recommendations. So you have, so that, the board, the full board also determines, do we need an ad hoc committee? There's an issue in our community, with our schools, it's a temporary issue, we need to put a group of people together to, to address the issue. We will have a report by the end of the year, make recommendations to the full board. The board will determine whether it acts on it or doesn't act on it. And so that's the ad hoc committee. But when you get into the actual meetings themselves, this is, and I've had issues with board members as a superintendent. I had a board member, we had, for example, a, a, um, a finance committee. And the finance committee, um, met and discussed, that's that example, an operations committee, operate, and it looked at school, school issues. Um, school health and safety and those kind of issues. So this board member was not on this subcommittee, but as a board member, he wanted to go to the meetings. Message I had to give him was the superintendent who had the direct line to Cabe, because I was in, to the member district. And I, I received my legal support from Cabe said, a board member can certainly attend a, a subcommittee meeting and attend, but that person is attending as a member of the community. That person is not on the subcommittee, doesn't vote and also shouldn't sit with the subcommittee. Should make it very, very clear that that person is there, can speak, when, when members of the community can speak, that person can speak. So there is, and again, I know committees can be a little bit less formalized, they, it is a little more give and take. But from a legal perspective, which is, which is really important for the board to consider. You have, if you have a subcommittee of three people, you don't have a quorum. This group can meet and, and, and discuss as a committee. And they bring recommendations back to the full board and a quorum. Make, make a motion, second it, and then vote to adopt what the committee recommended. So you have to be really careful that when you're in a subcommittee structure, the three people on the committee were appointed by the board chair. Uh, again, depending on your bylaws, they're the ones charged with making, um, doing the due diligence, their due diligence to look into the weeds and determine what has to be presented to the board for, for recommendation. And, and as a board member, if you're not on the subcommittee, you're a member of the community. At that point, you speak when the community can speak and you are responding to, it's really frustrating for board members, but that's FOI and, and legal pieces, um, it could become an issue if you don't operate that way.
So on that note, for us, we don't, our, our, uh, public don't speak in committees, meetings. So would that be a recommendation that you guys will make, uh, for us, maybe to think about that? I, I just wonder if that, that does not apply to us because our committee, uh, committees are run and they don't have, um, public speaking. So a board member couldn't speak as a public, so I want to make sure that we, you know, bring it to our level.
That's a really smart question. And, and from my experience, and, and districts are different, and I'm not here to proselytize, right? Um, for, if, if, if there's a policy committee, to me, subcommittee, I mean, it's monthly, right? You should, you should have, you should have, in my view, an opportunity for the public to speak. Because part of your deliberations is listening to your community about the topic, policy topic in your meeting.
See, that's where I get lost in translation, with all due respect, I'm going back to the progression. That's where I get lost in translation. For me, committee is a committee, that's what we have as right now in, in this board. A subcommittee will be something like what we do with the public, that we'll get, you know, some people from the public or this, and we do like a subcommittee about a topic. To me, that's, for me, that would be the three different, uh, the, the board, committees, and subcommittees are those that we involve. That's what I will call a subcommittee, but not, you know, you keep on referring to us and our committee meetings, subcommittee. And that's where I think I lose my translation is, I think our committees are committees. And the subcommittees will be those that we deem like, I know, uh, Dr. Avery and his team built some other committees, you know, throughout the district. And we are, we're involved, the public's involved, administration is involved, leader, you know, everybody is kind of like in that room. So that's where I'm like, oh, to me, that's what it means to me. A subcommittee is something different than what I, we have.
I, I guess I would love to have an agreement amongst ourselves, so we use the terms interchangeably for right now. Um, because we're talking about the same structure, we're talking about the same group of people making the same decisions. I don't know that getting into the semantics of what drives one to be a subcommittee versus a committee. You're talking about less than a quorum of the board meeting officially to discuss specific topics. And so you can use the word committee or use the word subcommittee, I would do, I intend to use them interchangeably, frankly.
And I haven't really answered that, but is that you, you, the board has worked, let's be, became, the board has a function, has work to do, has, it has policies to adopt. It has business to complete. Um, the board as, as an entity has, can't do all, all of its deliberations, all of its research as a full board. So then you think, well, how do we get that work done at, at a, at a, with a finer grain size? People who can really get, sink their teeth into it and get work done. That's where you develop committees. And, and so how does that, then you ask, so how does that committee do its work, do its deliberations? Well, to, to an extent, we do want to hear from our public. So then you think, well, do we need to have an agenda where we get public comment on the agenda item? And that, that's, that's certainly something that districts do and, and, and boards do to have their committees be better informed. But, but again, never lose sight, my, as a superintendent, I goes to my board, never lose sight of the work you're doing, that you're driving. And is, is under your authority to do. So when you, when you get a public input, it's about your work. If you're looking to have a meeting just to get public input about a lot of different things, have, have a hearing. You know, have, have a big town meeting and, and, and not having a board meeting, but having to say, where, where is it in this topic? We're, we're, we're looking at the next twenty years, we want to hear all the different people in our community come and speak to this issue. Um, we're looking at a major strategic plan, you know? You, you can do all of those different things, but they're not board meetings, they're hearings and you get to listen to the public. You get to even interface with the public if you want to.
But I wanted to just clarify, when, by not calling it meeting, it's still under the guise of the law, it's still a public meeting.
Right, it's a public meeting, right.
It's, the purpose is different, but, um, you've had your hand up and a couple of times you were shaking your head, so I'm like.
Well, I, I, I'm listening with interest. Um, I, we don't call them subcommittees, so let's just be clear, we call them committees. I understand what you're I understand what you're saying, but I think about Congress and all that, a committee will have subcommittees. Um and we call them committees. Uh and, you know, many organizations I've known call them standing committees. And the difference really is an ad hoc committee is a temporary committee. Um and, you know, we're going to have an ad hoc committee spend the next three months looking at this issue. And that's why it's called ad hoc. Um it's not going to be a permanent committee, a standing committee is a permanent committee. Um sometimes called standing committee, sometimes just called a committee. Um um and you've agreed that these are the committees we're going to have. Um we lost sight, as I understand it, although people may or may not agree with this history. But not having been a part of it, I'm just going to describe it roughly. Um but about two or three years ago, uh there was a dispute about how we form, how we decide on committees. Um um and uh we went from more to less, believe it as vaguely as I can. Um and we combined a couple. And that became the precedent that would enable somebody, Christine, to go from even less. Um but, you know, there had been some belief that in the past, the board agreed to what committees were, not the chair. And so that needs to be resolved in whatever new bylaws are out there is how we decide on committees. Um, you know, is it a board decision or a chair decision? And I'm not expressing that's an important decision that we need to make, is how we decide on committees. Um the belief was is that the the board decided it. Uh but because there was some less than full discussion about going from nine to seven or whatever it was. And then when Christine decided to go from seven to three, um you know, there was outrage. But the precedent of going from nine to seven was used to justify going from seven to three. So we're not, I'm not trying to pass any judgment, they're just saying that's, so we need to go back and have that clear.
And actually, by that should do.
Yes.
And can you, there are words to say the chair.
I'm trying not to really have that discussion, I'm just trying to say we need to be clear.
Yeah.
Um and so um that needs to be clear. And then the 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 chair then appoints the committee. Um the the three members or however, doesn't say how many members.
That's correct.
Um so we need to be, decide that too. Um and uh whether or not everybody's on the committee. Because that was one of the things that didn't happen in that last year, was two members of the board were not assigned committees. Um so we need to be clear about how that works too. Um and um you know, uh you raised a couple of interesting discussions in there when you were trying to decide, willing whether there's some some committee. And I think you're correct, we need to be clear, we're talking about the same thing, whether we call them committees or subcommittees, that we're talking. So let's just, because we call them committees, call them committees today, not that it matter, you know, but we'll call them committees for the same.
Who's that, what did Nick and Robert say?
I I go. Let's just, we'll call them committees for now, there are, and we, we may have a subcommittee at some point for some reason. And we may want to address in the bylaws the creation of some committees.
Remember, a subcommittee is a subset of a committee, and if you only have three to begin with, that really narrows your focus.
It's if the committee decides that it's going to create a subcommittee of some sort for some reason, then we should allow for it in the bylaws. Under what circumstances it might happen, but I'm I'm not arguing for or against it.
Right.
I'm just saying that's the way it would happen. And same with the ad hoc committee, under what circumstances an ad hoc committee would be created? And I think we were discussing in particular ad hoc committee recently being created for some purpose. I can't remember what it was right now, I'm blanking, but we were talking about an ad hoc committee.
Um. We're just talking about making the personnel committee available.
No, there was another, I thought there was another topic, but you're you are correct about that, I'm not going to disagree with that.
That's true.
But so, and and then I wanted to say your comment you made a moment ago about um discussions in committee, and I really resonated because contrary to the historic uh um description of my colleague. Um we were not allowed to participate in the committee discussions, then we were chastised if we wanted to then continue the discussion on the full board under the previous chair. Um and so I agree, I do not, I'm not one that believes I should be required to win every committee meeting if I'm not on the uh I don't have time for that, if I'm assigned a committee, I'll attend. I am one of those people who did try to get to most committee meetings to participate. But if I can't make a committee meeting, I don't want to be required to to do all my homework before the full board. I expect to know everything, I want to be allowed to have the discussion with the full board meeting. Um so it's an interesting conundrum that you lay out about, are we expected to know everything that happened at every committee meeting? Um or not? Um and so you laid that conundrum out, and it should be discussed. Um so I I leave it at that, um you know, we're going to expect every board member to know everything that happened at a committee meeting before they come to the full board. Um so I I like the way you said that. If it's going to be a matter like when you described, it's the full board's going to decide it a curriculum matter. Then let's just have it have the curriculum matter that's presented to the full board.
So there's a board topic rather than.
Discuss for an hour at the committee, of course, presented to the full board, I agree with that.
Right, yeah, you agree.
Yeah.
And then Andre after that.
So I've had a lot of conversations with you and Jody about this too, um just committees in general should be um uh, pretty don't have authority unless the board gives it authority, right? So um in in that sense, referrals to the board should be, the board says, want this, I am on the committee. So when it comes back to the full board, that committee chair.
Restart mine.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so when it comes to the full board, um you know, per our bylaws, or the chair is supposed to produce a report, a written report about it to the board, so that those who can't make it, the committees can have a full report, right? And so and ask questions if you need to then, but but the authority of the committee is given by the board now. So when we're doing committees, you know, if I want to hear about a certain item, that needs to be like talked to with the board first. In part, it's on a committee, so we shouldn't like, one board member shouldn't be able to dictate everything that's on that committee.
Right, and even the chair.
Even the chair.
Things are referred to the committee through the board. Um I, and Andre, I'll get you in just a second.
But it's not necessarily how they do things.
Right, well, that's why I think it starts with a general understanding, how do we want to go forward? And I've seen it work different ways, but that's the way it's most effective. I want to just throw one thing out and then we'll get to Andre, because you, you got your hand up. Um none of this works if you don't have trust. Because if you have subcommittees, but I'm not going to trust the work that they do, so I'm going to second guess everything that happens in the meeting. Then all of that work that we do in the subcommittees is kind of, I I hate to use the word a waste, because it's not always a waste, but it's a circumvent needing to spend all the time at the meetings, going over stuff that you're having that detailed conversation in the subcommittee. And if then you have to go back and, well, I don't really trust the three people, whoever they are on that committee. They didn't ask the questions I would ask, I'm going to do it all over again, you've negated the whole purpose of having this. So it has to start with a a level of trust that um allows you to put your trust in the people doing the work, and if they come back with a recommendation, yeah, you still have a few clarifying questions. But if you have to go back and do a detailed investigation of everything that had been worked out, then that's one of those cases where you probably should have on the subcommittee or committee. Um, Andre.
Oh yes, I I I think um some people don't understand, you know, being a part of the public, that you still can listen to the meeting, you know, I mean, you, it's not like just because you're not a part of the committee that you that you can't listen to the meeting, you know, the meeting is on YouTube. You know, which you don't have to watch right away, like you may be doing something at the time, so you could watch it later. There's plenty of times where I wasn't able to attend the meeting and I watched it on YouTube after, so you know, it's it's far far as that. Not not being able to 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 speak at the at the committee meetings and, you know, being a problem, I think that's a, that's that's not really an issue. And an another issue I have is, you know, we cut a lot of staff. You know, I think when we have long meetings, you know, we put a lot of strain on a little bit of staff that we have. And people don't take that into account a lot of the times. You know, I know, I I I I, you know, I don't really um, you know, get a chance to talk with 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 the with the with the people who do the 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 cameras and stuff like that. But I'm 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 sure they would like to to for us to have a a shorter meetings and not to, not to drag down like we do sometimes, you know, that I think that's just something that we need to keep in mind when when we're having these meetings, you know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think um I I would like sort of agree in terms of the staff, the strain that we put on our central office when we request certain things that, I know we're going to get to that side of what should be on the committee or not. Um you know, request certain things, or we we do things that aren't even our scope on a committee, so we want to look at, and I don't, well, we'll throw out things yet, because I know we get that, but we throw on things that the board have no really say over anyways, but yet want to talk about it, and that puts a strain on his staff, or whoever's.
And him.
Yeah, and him.
He had a full head of hair when he started. Well, I I'll, if you give me a second, Ron, I can. I'd like to just ask your opinion on bravery, um as a person who has to name all those work of the night scenes. Um I'm putting you on the spot a little bit, but um do you have any observations about how things are working? Either helping you or hindering you in your job? If you don't want to answer that, okay.
I don't got to answer that, I mean, I I, because I don't want the money to water, because I think it's it's, I have my mixed mixed feelings about it because sometimes it can be very helpful and sometimes not. And I don't think because I think what's 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 kind of convoluted in things is because when I look at what's before me when when they have bylaws, you you hit it on the nose earlier when you talked about there have been changes with bylaws based on fixing an issue that previous, you know, years was exposed by the board. And when you do that, it's all, it's all together now, and all the things that's changed convolutes the work of this seat. And I don't think, I don't think the board truly understands that, they just want to fix the problem by changing the bylaws because they had that issue in the past, but can't fix that that way in order to make amends. You know, and to me, that's the hardest thing that my staff and I talk about that all the time. What are they doing, why is it that way, why are we having to do this? But I'm like, well, because it's in the bylaws, we have to follow it. It may not be the right thing to do, but we have to follow it because in the bylaws. So I think that's really what's confusing, you know, and I mean, I could, I could say a lot of different things, but I've been trying to yeah, I, we have to follow it, but it's not really the thing you do to kind of get the work done.
Well, anytime you're dealing with policy or bylaws, you're dealing with the the whole issue around the unintended consequences. And that's why I'm a really big believer in, you put all the effort into deliberating over the policies, over your bylaws. You talk about it, you get informed about it, you you talk with your superintendent, superintendent um shares his views around what's being um recommended, so that all that deliberation, time devoted to it, you end up with bylaws that have all of the intended consequences and not the unintended consequences. When you try to fix a problem and you do it by just changing a word or a process or procedure, it could have a whole series of unintended consequences that you never can, obviously, based on the definition of the word, you didn't expect to have.
And as you were saying that, I wrote intent, because what's the intent of the policy is really more important than the language that gets you there. Especially if, well, we had this, we put this Band-Aid on, to your point, but it blocked this, or, you know, so so, yeah, that's why I'm trying to have, keep this as a higher level conversation about what do you want to see? Um and I've heard so far that the structure of the meetings, um the ability for the public to address the subcommittee at some point, and your topics are going to be on the agenda. It's not like you'd be adding things to the agenda, so they'll have the chance to do that. Um there was a strong idea that we ought to figure out, how do we get our committees? Is that a board decision, does it, do you give the authority to the chair, or is that a board decision, the bylaws should specify that? Who gets on them, typically, it's the chair that appoints uh sub, sub committees, there, I go, yeah, committees. Um that's the norm, really, there are some alternatives to that, but they're not too often. Um so, but again, if we keep that first expectation, what are the high level issues we got to address? So that Jody can help you craft with your staff, a policy that says, it enables us rather than restricts us. That if you, if a policy is doing nothing but, you can't do this, you can't do that, you can't do that, because something happened two years ago, or five years ago, or ten years ago. You're you're, it's like walking through a minefield, there's all these little things, it's, to your point, unintended things a lot of times, that keep us from doing our job. And I'd rather see you start over with a policy that's a half page long, saying, this is why we have subcommittees. And then you'll have regulations, or you might have some some policies, other policies um that might get more specific about how you govern it, or how you decide, make some of those decisions. But that first policy should, that we want subcommittees to support the work of the board by doing prep work, by, you know, um giving important issues a voice or an o- o- opportunity for study, to investigate, to look at. I don't even like the word investigate necessarily, because that's not something boards typically do, investigate.
It's research.
E3 search, yeah, yeah, good word. Um and and then from that, it helps lay out what those bylaws are going to look like. Well, if if it's to support the board's work, if it's to enhance the board's work, then there's certain things that will fall right through. And and these are things written in the back, and Jody has, well, look at the, yeah, the farming to the here. But, you know, there are lots of examples of very um small policies that govern how committees work. Because it doesn't have to be difficult. Again, you're dealing with a whole lot of baggage from a whole lot of years. And so it may take you, you can't go from A to Z, maybe you have to go from A to B, and then B to C, you get to Z eventually. But the the, if you articulate what it is you want, what's your goal, it's going to make it easier to have those bylaws, bring that together. Is any of this resonating, is this helping in this conversation?
I think yes, um I I'm just, you know, the theme was workshop, and I just want to, I I, you know, you almost started talking about it, kind of giving some suggestions. And I know that you're not here trying to, you know, put things on 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 a stone, but just to give us suggestions on how to accomplish this. Because, you know, I read the bylaws, when it comes to committees and how they're forming, are they not forming? To me, it's very clear, black and white, it's almost like kindergarten, you could understand it, who has the uh authority and who doesn't have the authority. Literally even state the specific, who does it, who that job belongs to, and who the job does belong to, it literally specifies it. Um so I didn't think that was ever a question when it was handed to all the members, but, I mean, again, I went to two chairs. Um and that came out in my very first year, right, back in January. Um but um, yeah, you had a question, I'm sorry.
Well, I I was just going to say, you know, Jody and I talked about your bylaws regarding your committees, and we both said the same thing. It's obvious that they've writ a lot, they've modified these bylaws over time to react to things rather than to help give better guidance. You know, if certain things were, I hate to use the word abuse, but if certain practices were clear or didn't necessarily meet the expectations of the board, um you changed the bylaw to fix that, but you were fixing a specific problem rather than, yeah, looking more globally, let's let's just create, and then, you know, just like, who speaks at a committee? Now, there's some flexibility with that. I know when I was the chair of our policy committee, um we had a topic, and a lot of times, I mean, how many public members we cut to three, to the policy committee, a lot of board members, we just had open conversations. We didn't bother going through the formality of Robert's rules. There's times when a topic like that, well, a lot of them, there may be times when you have to be more forthwith, more people come, or if we start start tripping over each other, then it probably makes sense, let's wait, you know what, we're not moving this forward like we should, let's the chair is going to reinstate progress tools for this to the meeting or something. But that's something that you you have to make work. Um and I'm not sure that it needs to be universal within each committee, that everybody does it exactly the same way. But it gets back to, do we trust each other to do it the right way? Or do we have to have more restrictions or more regulation in our bylaws to make sure that it's done correctly? And I'm not sure I have the answer for that for you tonight, but again, we're trying to give you things to think about so that you can craft your policy to meet your needs. Now, um I guess I'll throw this out one more time to continue this conversation, but I do want to start to talk about what you're currently doing. I guess I'll throw this out one more time to continue this conversation, but I do wanna start to talk about what you're currently doing in subcommittees.
In this session, we're reading about committees referring to the full board. Significant percentage of agendas at my community meetings have not referred to the board.
Not referring to the board, just discussing something and it's not creating action for the board?
There are actionable items.
And that, well, still, but in your report, you would still say, we looked at this and here's a synopsis of what we saw. So that's how you can share that knowledge with the rest of the board. I think we were probably talking more about the opposite of committees not necessarily running rampant and deciding whatever they want to talk about. Other than they're, they're representing the work of the board, so the work is referred to them by the board.
It's like, you know, act on progress, you know, issues that came right starting last spring. Trying to start with beginning of the year or two, which we haven't been doing.
You can get into detail in years. The superintendent can report more detail at the sub
Yes.
Committee level, um, and that, and, but then you, the chairs report to the board would say, you know, this is what we talked about. Here's a couple areas that we looked at, et cetera. And then, so you distill that down for the board.
I just wanna be clear.
Sure. So now let's talk about your standing committees. How many have you had from?
We have ten from brief.
But I, you have a policy committee, I know that.
Yes.
Current.
Policy and personnel. Sorry, or is the policy committee acting as meeting the whole right now?
It's not, policy and personnel are one committee.
Policy personnel. I think that's how I spell it. Spell check's not working. Look at that one over here, I think that's getting hard work.
Yep.
Facility. Facilities.
Facilities.
And instruction and support services.
Instruction and support services?
Yes.
This is the question I'd ask. How's this work for you? Do you feel as a board that the current structure is supporting the work of the board in the district? Or can it sometimes get in the way of that? Oh. No.
Hello, everybody. Apologize for my late arrival. I went to a career fair, my college and career fair. I'm just popping on and I'm hearing this question, um, we, we on the policy committee were drafting definitions and everything for the committees and we had discussed separating policy and personnel and having personnel of the committee as a whole since the state has made it illegal to have an executive session with people outside the committee, even if they're board members. So we thought that would be best. And we had to find everything and we were ready to start going into actually defining the committee structures. And all of a sudden, this meeting stepped on the meeting that was gonna happen, that finished discussion of this before bringing it to a full board. I don't know if we talked about that before, cause I wasn't here.
There was no meeting call today, except for this meeting. Nick, Nick and Julie and I discussed this meeting three weeks ago. Wait, I waited on Nick to confirm a date that was available, was available this date. I set the committee agenda. I told you prior to the policy committee that we were having this committee tonight. And then I called the meeting for tonight, over two weeks ago, two weeks ago, actually, called it the name of Spain. If you guys had questions about it, you could have asked.
Right, but, but meanwhile, the committee has done a lot of limited work. Right, and, and since, and since we're discussing this, um, did we get any, any information in the packet about the committee definitions and all this stuff? The, are we ready to discuss tonight what the committee work that has been done around the committees? That's one of the committees charging policy and personnel, um, cause, cause bylaws and policy are two different things. The bylaws govern the board. It shouldn't really govern the superintendent or nothing about that. And I would like to see the Connecticut Associations of Boards of Education work in conjunction with the board to develop the board bylaws and work with the superintendent, maybe to develop policies relevant to the superintendent. But these are our bylaws that govern us. And as far as going back in the past and recurring, there's a saying that people who don't learn from history are doomed to repeat it. Now, there's some very important suggestions inside those drafted bylaws, including a simple change of one word from May to shall, because all board members should have a voice. Yes, we did, we're doing it in reaction to something in the past, but that's a past that could never, ever repeat itself. We can never, never have a board again that shuts out people from speaking at a committee meeting on hundreds of millions of dollars of budgets, which have got us into our current situation. So we are, yes, we are being reactive, we're being reactive. We got to stay breathing down our neck because we weren't reactive enough in the past. So this is work to prevent anything from happening in the future. I do not want to repeat the past. So we learn from the past and we move on and change things from the past that we're not working, that we're clearly able to be abused. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. All right. So what I was wanting to try to do is identify areas that the committees are currently doing. I'm trying to get a sense of how much of this stuff, and again, not reflecting, if you mentally a certain way, doesn't mean you're bad. But, cause I said at the beginning, there was a vacuum of, of different things within the districts. So somebody had made decisions that maybe would typically not be done by the committee or a subcommittee. Um, and so I'm just trying to articulate better how you can set a charge to each committee of this is what your purpose. Um, you know, I'm trying to think, well, New Haven had one for, uh, field trips. They had a subcommittee of their board, a committee of their board. They did nothing but approve field trips and they met once a month and they approved dozens of field trips. And they realized that's, that's not really covered, that's the energy. So they, what they did was establish and add hot committee on governance and they reviewed all of their bylaws and said, that's really not a job for the Board of Education. That should be articulated in policy and given to superintendent or his staff to decide on what's appropriate, what's not. That that isn't something that boards should be voting on every time somebody wanted to do a trip to a museum or something.
So let me chime in.
Yes.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a risk here and make a suggestion as to one sub, one committee, you should, one standing committee, you should definitely have. Policy committee. One of your major responsibilities as the board is to adopt policy, to ensure that policies are up to date. Mainly the policies are in place, they follow all legal requirements. They meet your community's expectations and, and mores and norms. And, and they, and they say what you, what your beliefs are around how this district operates and serves your children. Every one of your, uh, every one of your children. So you should have a policy, a standing policy committee with nothing else but policy. So we got one.
Also that, that field trip thing, out of state field trip, that goes on the instruction and support services that, you know, if you want to write that. That's what they do, one of the things they get brought to them. It's out of state, if I'm understanding correct, gave correct, this is your trailer? Yes, when they.
They, that's not unusual. So again, all field trips is unusual, but it's not, couple, let's do that, it's not helpful.
They're staying out of state.
And Jody and I probably disagree on this. I would argue that it's not even critical if you do that, because your policy says that they're going to an area where there's threats or there's a cost involved or whatever, then you can legislate that in policy and set it aside. But I acknowledge that boards, many boards, if not most of them, do vote on out of state field trips. So I'm not gonna argue with you.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
What else does that committee do right now? Anything?
Instruction support services?
Well, I was gonna start with policy.
I think with policy, okay. They've gone over the bylaws, the, uh, the, not bylaws, the series, so three thousand series.
Well, I, I, that's part of, I can't see how you would do that any other way.
Yeah.
Received a minor correction. Out of state and overnight.
Okay, well, that's, that is also very common. And putting that at the committee level actually probably is a really good thing, because otherwise you're putting them all before the board. And I don't know, does that go on like a consent agenda and, um, you still vote on it or is that just the committee approves and?
Just to the full board and they don't have a consent agenda yet.
We would like.
We would like. It is at least being facilitated through my committee, through the board, full board for so we are saving time, being more efficient already, hopefully getting more efficient.
I'm just to clarify, when, when you, when you're, when you have the full board meeting, on the agenda is a, is a report from this committee. And you just give the list of approved or field trips that you were presented to about whatever. And you're recommending to the board approve these field trips.
Yeah, but that's not for a vote yet, it's still unlisted as new business.
Yeah, then we go to new business.
Gets to that point where.
Yeah.
Um, Akisha has her light on and then we'll get to. Asia.
Hi, yeah, I just wanted, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
Okay, um, I just wanted some clarity on something, um. I wanted to ask about FOI. Um, under FOI, a board member who is not a committee member is considered a member of the public. So if you're allowed to speak as part of the discussion as a board member, are all other community members that are there present that day allowed to speak as part of the discussion?
My, my understanding of this, again, I'm not an attorney, but my understanding is that, um, in, in a committee where, where you have three board members on a committee, they're, they're, they are, it's their meeting. And that others attending are under the category of the public. So other board members, uh, community members, whatever, whatever is good for community members is good for the other board members who are not on the committee. They're treated the same way, they're, they're under the, um, legal term, public.
In our bylaws, we historically have allowed them, has been.
So just so, Jody, just so I can understand what you just said. So the general public that attends that same said meeting, if other board members are allowed to speak at that committee meeting, are other community members that attend the board meeting allowed to speak on the subject as well as part of the discussion? Yes or no?
Yes.
They are, okay, thank you.
It's, it's kind of, al- almost backwards from your question would be that if the public is allowed to speak, board members are allowed to speak. And if public, if there's no place in your meeting for no public comment, then those other board members, me, members of the public would not. But I think that gets back to, back to the rules.
No, but that's separate, but, but public comment is separate though, right? That's separate from what I'm talking about. That's separate from what I'm talking about.
If on your agenda, there, there's an opportunity, on your committee agenda, as, as your, if there's a, if there's a section devoted to public comment, that's where your public would be able to speak on the topic, on, on the topic, on, on the agenda topic. And, and your board members who are not on the committee and your public are under, under the guise of public and they would be able to speak at that point.
Right, yeah, I understand that, but the, the public in itself, though, that shows up in person is not allowed to be like a part of the conversation throughout the entire meeting is what I'm asking.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, thank you.
Um, our bylaw, our, our bylaws allow the chair to decide who gets to speak from the, from the board. Only.
Okay, so that is another area you wanna explore. What, what should the rule be? And I would say probably for all committees.
Yeah, I always just, well, we're talking about changing bylaws. And my own, my own, my, my only caveat there would be to, to just have that embedded by legal. Just to see if that's, yeah, I mean, you can want to do that, but if it's not legal, if you find it's not defined.
Christine, I see your hand up.
I just wanted to comment that uh, at least with Jody's interpretation, that just opens up a can of worms. And, um, when uh, things were going, at least when I was chair, that was part of the goal, was to have the committee of the three members there ask questions and report to the board everything that the committee had discussed and voted on in a summary. So that that way during the regular meetings is more efficient, these were the questions asked and answered than anything else. Um, I, I would stay afraid from, uh, I always think about employee burnout. If meetings are long and there's an eight AM start day the following day. Um, if there's too many committees, we're already a distressed school district, adding more committees and more workloads. That was part of the logic, at least when I was chair, to consolidating and trying to mirror successful school districts who had significantly less, um, standing committees. Uh, but I, I would stay afraid, um, with regards to um, opening committee meetings to members of the public who are not elected or appointed to on the board to start to implement. I mean, as board members, we should have that communication with commit, uh, members of the public outside of our meetings. So that way that we're getting to know the community members' values, not during our meetings. I mean, it's, it's a balance of actually promoting a district where people wanna work at and not feel like they wanna work extremely long hours for repetitive and non-efficient, um, meetings. Uh, we need to stay very focused and by we, I mean, the board needs to be very focused that what they're accomplishing on a committee is actually gonna be aimed towards the improvement of student outcomes and educational opportunities for the students. Um, and so I, I would refrain from public comment on the committee level, cause it hasn't been vetted yet. And, and, and committee, community members that do attend on the committee level, they can be absolutely free and welcome to discuss with board members after the fact. If board members don't wanna meet with members of the community afterwards, that's something the community can remember when it's election time.
Thank you. I, I guess I would only add that depending on what the topic is, there might be a program or something that you're discussing at the committee level that has a direct impact on the public and you wanna get the public's opinion on what are the implications for this issue? You know, something, maybe it's involving something more of a social nature or, um, something that might be be slightly controversial and you know there might be concern in the public, that might be a more appropriate place to get some of that feedback. So I think some of it's situational, depending on what the topic is, whether or not you have just, you know, and, and there's nothing that says it has to be five minutes. It might be, you know, for public content in the subcommittee, maybe it's two minutes. Um, and you are posting your agenda with what's on there. So, um, you know, there's that possibility, but I think some of it, I, and again, this goes way back, um, when AIDS first became an issue. Districts were coming up, we were scared, what policy do you have on something with like bloodborne pathogens? Nobody really understood it. Doctors were still trying to figure out, so like COVID was a couple of years ago, we're still trying to figure out what it means. Um, we had a subcommittee meeting, meet with as many of the medical professionals in our community as we could. And I think even maybe a couple of members of the clergy, because there were some other social aspects to that we wanted to make sure we heard. So we had a much more open conversation as we deliberated the policy, knowing there was a lot of, of community interest in what was being discussed. We might not do that when we're looking at a new science textbook, for example, in a, in a, um, in a instructional committee. So I think some of that really is situational, depending on what the issue is. And I think that at the beginning of that meeting, the, the board or the committee itself, through the leadership of the chair would say, um, what are we gonna do on this topic? Do we open it for conversation or do we require that that be part of that public comment at the very beginning? And that's still a place for them to have that conversation. But, um, and, and as I say, I've seen it in that one, there were quite a few members of the public that were concerned. Cause again, at that time, nobody really understood what was happening. Um, and I, I remember one, a couple, well, maybe 10 years ago, I walked into a district. The issue sounded minor, um, they, somebody came up with a statistic that all of the fire drills were happening in the mornings. And the kindergarten parents were upset because the afternoon kindergartners never had a fire drill. Thirty of them showed up at a board meeting, ready to argue, and nobody on the board even had a clue about what was happening. So they had to sort of address that. So they had to sort of address that. And in that particular case, they created a separate hearing just for that with the superintendent. Plus superintendent had a chance to go back and research because one of the comments made here was that doesn't allow people to be prepared. You just have open conversation, superintendent might not even be aware of a certain thing. This gave the superintendent the opportunity, when we have that public hearing, I can report on what we know as facts. And in that case, it was true, there had not been any afternoon fire drills. So they changed schedule. I said, from now on, we'll make sure they're adequately split. It didn't even really need to rise to the board level, but I think the scrutiny of the board hearing that made sure it happened quicker rather than later. So, um, now, I'm, I guess I'm still, the personnel you're talking about treating that board as a committee as a whole, as I understand it. Because that's one, other than the fact that the, the, I don't start a piece, I'm not, I don't see a connection. Um, so this goes off to the board.
I think one of the reasons was that, um, for the session, for purposes of executive session. Yeah, so.
Because one is dealing more specifically, and, and there may be some policy issues that relate to personnel, but they're the broader, more general discussions that aren't individually, it's not about, you shouldn't have to have that conversation.
Like is that person a claim? It would be a, a topic that may fall under a personnel subcommittee, but that, that's really, in my view, for full board discussion.
Other than, I know you spend, you're spending a huge amount of time just reviewing policies and stuff, which is what policy committees do. Is there anything else under this list that we would think maybe? I, I wouldn't have thought of, but I wanted to just clarify that. Instruction support services. Outside of the field trips, um, what are some of the things that you would discuss in that?
That we've been discussing?
Yeah. Maybe the other thing around policy, maybe I'm stretching a little bit, so. Just one thing the policy committee might consider is, is, um, not recommending surveys to the community to gather information. I know the issue has come up around letting the public, um, help inform the board's work. I think sometimes when it comes to policy, there may be opportunities for the policy committee to establish or to determine whether or not a survey is appropriate and work with the administration in putting out a survey around, you're doing a dress code policy, you want to survey your community about their thoughts around dress code. Um, doing other policies that may be impactful for the community. Maybe that would be one, other area that would be outside of just simply developing or recommending policies. It would be perhaps, um, looking at vehicles for, or considering vehicles for community input. And that's just, I'm just maybe.
So stretching. So having the policy, well, not a bad thought. I'm wondering if that's more of the, the bylaw on the committee saying the board can, um, use various means to solicit community feedback.
Yep, good.
So vehicles for community feedback. And that might be any committee.
Right. And still, I like that because it's the board level and not at the policy level.
Um. Curriculum?
Yeah.
There are instruction.
Yeah.
Instruction and support services.
Having an understanding of the relationship between curriculum and instruction and all of those things, learning part of the board.
Um.
Um, we've had, um, code of conduct coming for approval. Preferable.
Code of conduct.
Student code of conduct.
Student.
Cause I think that's.
Student, student, that's that. He handles those together.
Updates on special education. Updates about special education. I'm gonna.
Now, um, does the, the committee on support services ever will get individual cases or make decisions or review anything, um, outside of like this broader level?
Like specific, like if there's like a grievance or anything, or?
Um, well, potentially, although that would probably be personnel through the board. Um, and grievance, you really don't care much about it unless it passes the superintendent's desk and is referred to the board. Otherwise, they'll typically get much on, you know, you don't want some.
They, they do a lot of data fact checking. So if there's an issue with suspension, so we want to hear, they want data on suspension. If there's absenteeism, so specific data sources which impacts instruction, which is, which is, so that, we do, we do a lot of that. Well, we're starting to do a lot of that, which is a good thing in a way, but it's really summarizing how that looks and what this, what's this all about.
Is that done in a sort of planned, organized, or is it every once in a while, say, hey, what's going on with this or that?
That.
It's usually like the third, or remember, like, like request that.
Yeah. Um.
Really? Yeah, it is referred and it, but also they are working on, just mentioning that they are working on getting something irregular standing, kind of like getting a report as.
Yeah, let's have a calendar, you know, like in January, you will hear this, every February you will hear this. That's a, that's a way of.
Yeah, I mean, like every board, every monthly meeting, I will provide some data sources that are relevant to what the board has been discussing in, in meetings and things that we feel or I feel that's important for the board to, to have. So that's coming forward, being able to look at district enrollment, look at, you know, um, the number of specially eligible students in the district. So we have those, you know, um, data sources that's going to be coming probably we can do it daily if we choose to do it that way, but we're going to try to minimize at least once a month what type of data is needed so that we don't have to bring it up to meetings unless there's a question about the data source that we can bring. So, so again, those are the types of things to minimize a lot of the, you know, asking about certain things, but get it to them in a timely manner that they're able to, from that point. Uh, you know, have the information they need, keep moving and not, not, you know, bog down a committee meeting or board meeting with those questions.
Because some data, you don't, you can't look at weekly anyway. You're not going to want to look at your discipline data weekly, but maybe you want to look at it twice a year, mid-year. Make corrective changes, address the issues that you're seeing, and then look at the end of the year and see if those corrective measures have improved.
Well, one of the questions I guess I'd have, and not specifically, I'm throwing it out there. If board members can just ask whatever they want through the board to the superintendent, um, then they're in essence individually instructing the superintendent on action. And, um, that's fine if this document is readily available, you know, hey, I'd really like to see the, the data on absenteeism for the last six months. Well, that's there. Although you might have to spend some time getting something to massage it, to bring it to the board, but it's one thing, but it's like, I'd like a report on this. And there's, there is no report on that, so somebody has to stop their work and do that. That's when I start to get a little concerned that if nine board members are each asking of that, um, then something else isn't going to get done. And, um, I have often given the advice to superintendents that if I get a question like that, um, we're going to talk to the chair, we'll put it on the agenda, and if the board votes to make that my work, it becomes my work. Because it's, again, if it's one thing, a document exists of like a copy of it or this data exists and, and without a lot of effort, we can get a report on it. I think that's what superintendents want to do. They want to make sure that you have the information necessary, but if I want you. True story, this actually did happen, um, board member wanted to see the nurses' incident reports of all eight elementary schools in the district for the last six months. Now, there's laws about just giving unredacted information to begin with, so somebody had to redact out six months worth of eight elementary schools' nurses' incident reports. And their policy was even more restrictive because it said those responses had to be within 24 or 48 hours of the request, which was insane because they could not do it. The board acknowledged that is not fair to the superintendent because that was a huge amount of work and it's relatively, by an elementary school, it's not real small district, but it was small enough. There weren't a lot of people in central office with nothing to do to stop it and do that. So they acknowledged that in a situation like that, it should be put on the board agenda. And then if requested by the board, it becomes a superintendent's job because he works for the collective board, not nine individuals. In this particular case, frankly, the board member actually had a good concern, um, during, it was a really bad budget year. They were, um, cutting tooth and nail everywhere. They actually had the idea, we have eight elementary schools. Why don't we have four nurses? We'll have them in the morning in one school and the afternoon in the other, and then we'll see how it works. And this board member's question was, how's it working? Now, that would be a very valid board member question. We made this decision, is it working? But instead he said, I want all this data, and he wasn't a healthcare professional, he was an attorney. I want to see all this data and I'm going to investigate and judge whether or not something's happening. And he would have made life a lot easier if he just said to the superintendent, this is what I'm trying to figure out. The appropriate data would have been, would have been made available. So I think that's why it's really good practice. It, it may be in the subcommittee, at least the committee is agreeing that this is kind of, but if the, that work is being fed through the board anyway, as it should be, then that question would come up at that time. Well, if you want us to do this, um, what do we do to the, in order, and really it's, let's make sure we're asking the right question. Because he wasn't asking the question he really wanted to have answered. Joe.
Yes, um, I want to try to save us a little time. We have done significant amount of work on the policy committee. Um, we've actually tried to define, we're ready to move into the full board as I stated before. So I, I think it will be beneficial to hear what we got, to see if we actually got a framework that makes sense, rather than to try to reinvent the wheel on every single committee. If I'm, if I may, I would like to start with, which one did we just go through? Um, we got here, we defined.
We're on instruction support services right now.
Instruction, okay, instruction and support services. We defined the committees. We defined what a standing committee was, what a special committee was, um, what an ad hoc committee was. We defined, we separated out the personnel committee from the policy committee. And we're on ISS now. Let me see if I could get to that one. Give you one moment, please, ISS. Okay. The Instruction Support Service Committee is a standing committee of the Board of Education responsible for overseeing the district's academic programs and the support services that contribute to student success and well-being. The purpose is to ensure that instructional practices, student services and support programs align with the district's mission, education goals and legal requirements. Responsibilities include, but are not limited to, review and recommend curriculum instruction program changes, review any related contracts, monitor the teacher and student achievement data through, and instructional effectiveness, oversee student support services including special education, counseling and mental health services, health and wellness programs, English language learner services, review policies related to instruction and support and student services, ensure compliance with state and federal education mandates, and address any items referred to it by the full board. Membership is typically composed of two to three members appointed by the board chair. They include district administrators. Meetings held regularly, monthly or as needed, open to the public in accordance with open meeting laws. Agendas and minutes are documented and shared with the full board. Reporting, the committee represents, the committee presents findings and recommendations to the full board for discussion and action. Now, these were defined on each and every committee suggested, there was five committees suggested, separating out the personnel from the others for the time being. So we can move forward and have something since we're under this time pressure to develop our committees, our definition thereof. And I believe we got a good framework to start with and it's kind of troubling that you guys don't have this framework in your hands to comment on yet.
You don't? I've thought before. But can you just repeat what you said the purpose of this was for, since you're reading that?
We're trying to make sure that there's some understanding at the broadest level, what the need for the subcommittees are, the, what the work of the committees should do. And start to talk about the framework by which everyone agrees it should be done. Getting some things out.
Right. Now, may I interject? Did anything you just hear sound crazy and out of the realm of what we should be doing? Or does it seem like the committee has a firm grasp on what we should be doing and how we should be forming these committees? And is it coloring outside the lines at, at all? Is there something you would caution us against implementing?
Well, I think the purpose of tonight was to hear from everybody to get a sense, so that when we go into this process, and again, you know, we also have to be of mind that Jody is under contract with the Bridgeport Public Schools to be helping the district come up with these policies. So, um, you know, a lot of work's being done, I, and again, I hear what you're saying and I'm not disagreeing or agreeing. It's kind of hard when you're reading it to get a full sense. I didn't hear anything objectionable, but, um, this was more.
Madam Chair, could we?
More about thirty thousand.
I'm sorry.
Conversation to, um, allow everybody to have a sort of a, a voice in this in terms of what's working, what's not working, to get a broader sense, which should still dovetail with what, now that you've preparing to give this to the board, it may in fact answer many of the questions they have, but we're trying to see that they get articulated in a way that made sense.
Absolutely. And I do not disagree with one thing you said. However, however, there was a committee meeting which the full board was invited to participate and speak at, which the chair was in attendance of, and if I may ask the chair to send you all of these to see if you have any problems with anything that, anything that might tweak a legal thing of any of the work we've done thus far, because the committee, I believe, is ready to move forward and to bring it to the full board for revisions, suggested revisions and what have you, so we could finally have defined committees as we were supposed to for a long time. Because I've honestly, if the full board wants input, they could give input at any committee, be any day, they could give input once presented to the full board for approval. And then.
This is what, this is, that's what it's for.
That's what, this is meaning for. Joe, what I'd suggest is that, um, you take notes because it sounds like much of what you heard is not, everything you heard tonight is in alignment with what you're, you're working on. Um, but you might pick up something new that somebody else is commenting. I see Andre's got his head up again. But, and, and again, I did, I would also, Andre apologizes. The other thing was that part of the conversation was how much of the work that is currently being, being done in committees has alternative ways of being done that don't involve committees. Um, but that's, that, and that's where we were starting to work on this. Andre ended up really trying to refocus.
Do you have a pad onto this?
Uh, okay, yeah, I just, I just wanted to, I just wanted to tell Joe, you know, not that, no, I think that he missed the beginning, he missed the beginning of the meeting. You know, so he may, he, he may, you know, he's kind of talking about stuff that we already talked about, but not, nobody's saying that, 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 that the committees aren't handling business. They're just saying that the committees are, you know, taking too long to handle business. I guess that's kind of like a little short way of saying it, I guess, but no, but no, Joe, nobody's saying that, that, that they're not handling the business. Everybody's doing what they're supposed to do. They're handling policies, that, you know, stuff is getting, getting, business is getting handled, but we just got to be a little bit quicker about how we do business and a little bit more, you know, uh, uh, on, on target. And, um, a, a, a big, a big part of, of that is, is, is kind of, you know, getting our, our committees a little bit more on, on, on tune and, 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 you know, on point. So I think we're starting on this side.
I just want to, before you start, I just want to thank you. I heard about the audio, unfortunately, and this type of structure works terribly, and I apologize for that. Um, heard enough to agree with you, but, um, I, I I'd like, if we do something like this again, to really sort of make it in person so that we can really hear each other and see each other. Um, it makes it a little easier. Joe, go ahead.
And also if you want to refer to these meetings, do I? Just, just lobbying a little bit. Again, I know this is a tripwire and a minefield, but I'm going to say it, not with the idea that it's going to change our discussion or, but, but I think again, looking at even what's in the bylaw related to instructional, instruction and support services. There are areas that I would, from my perspective, look at some of this and say, is this board work or is it administration work? And, and I'll give you three areas that my view, in a big, my view, not yours perhaps, that this is, that these are administrative tasks. Reviewing any related contracts, to me, that's something that should be assigned to administration to review contracts. Um, that's, and, and that's. Um, that's, and, and that, and, and, for administration will ensure that the attorneys are reviewing that contract and informing the superintendent's recommendation related to that. I know this bag and I know this history, I get all that. But, but I want, I want to go into a whole different discussion. That's my perspective. Another, another area would be evaluating professional development plans for, for education. To me, that's an administration's job too. You know, I hired the superintendent to evaluate professional development, ensure it's effective and, and people are learning to do the right things to educate our children to the highest levels. Overseeing student support services. I don't want a board of education overseeing student support services. Should they be informed about the adequacy of those programs and, and those programs and absolutely, should they be presented about those programs and what they do and what they cost? The, the return on investment, all board stuff, but overseeing those programs, that's, to me, that's superintendent's job. So that, so there are areas, I think this, these are very specifically drawn out charges or, or descriptions of these committees. Typically, they have less so when, when, when I've seen them.
I have another add-on for things that this committee has covered extensively.
Okay.
PAC and PTSO spending.
It's PTO.
PAC and PTSO, the spending and overseeing some of their things. Does not, we're talking about them extensively in trainings that I'm on.
Right, not in the wheelhouse. Um, I see Christine and I get Christine.
I was gonna say something else, but I do want to agree with what I believe Jennifer just stated regarding the PAC and PTSOs. Um, it, it, I, I, I'm not, I, I'm very certain that a, a lot of the time the board is not focused on board-related tasks and what is the role of the board. And I won't lie to you, if there was something posted in the portal, I didn't get a chance to review it. But Jody, is there something regarding like best practices or how to distinguish what is a board function versus what is a, um, what's an administrative function? Because I think the line becomes very blurred and has historically always been blurred as to what is each role and what is each function. And that causes a, a lot of confusion as well as it, it decreases the board's efficiency to get the business of the district done.
We don't have anything on the portal tonight, just so you know, but sorry, Christine.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I should clarify. We don't have anything in the portal tonight, but I know that Jody and, um, they cast up for us.
Yeah, there, there are things that, that, um, I know Nick has and I have as well regarding um, superintendent responsibilities, responsibilities and board roles, responsibilities. So there are materials we have that, that we can certainly share with, with you. Some of it, yeah, a lot of it has to do with the, the, to the evaluation process and and, and, and some of those materials. But, but that's a good point. It's something that, um, Nick does all the time with boards, superintendent roles.
I think you got a loss this past year.
Yeah. And so
I think that's, um, something we should go back on, especially if the bylaws, bylaws are being uh, discussed or considered to be changed. Um, I, I do want to just pivot quickly because I, I, I have an inquiry regarding it, and I understand when board members have questions regarding certain things, but my concern is and the way you use the function is if I'm the chair, I work with the superintendent, hey, I want to talk about test scores. Did we improve? How can we improve them? Oh, those test scores aren't available and I would know as chair to save that for a later date to bring up or yeah, a calendar for a later board meeting or committee meeting. Uh, my, my question on that topic is what to do when, in, you know, uh, an individual board member may have an inquiry to something and want that to be a topic, but it's not the appropriate time. Um, it, the concern is that this is happening more on the meeting level. It, it just feels like sometimes, um, a board member is acting unilaterally and making decisions uh, in real time. And from my understanding, it should be more of a collaborative uh, discussion with the board or at least the board chair and the superintendent regarding timing. So that way we can actually have information and data to really digest.
So I, I get, I, I'm trying to frame and answer to your question. Um, it is not unusual for someone to approach the chair and say, I'm interested in doing this or talking about this at a future meeting. And then it is the role of the chair and the superintendent to sit down together and figure out where's the appropriate place to put that on the agenda. Um, is it next meeting? Is it, we're good, we planned on doing a report in April and it's January or February, so we're gonna put that off till April and that way everybody has time to put the material together, the information. Um, but I, what I'm going to say and say this carefully is as long as that communication is back to the board member, here's what we're going to do. I think most board members are going to be comfortable with that. I think it's the blind side of somebody saying, I moved that we add this to the agenda tonight. That can get troublesome if that happens and I don't know if it does. Um, because then nobody has time to really think through what are we talking about and, and sat the superintendent probably at least at all, because I could tell you, I could give you a report, I could do all this if I knew that you wanted it. Um, it might preclude, but other than that, I'm not sure where that fits.
And to Christine's point, um, a lot of times, and I think we spoke of this earlier, he's receiving, I need this, you know, and he has to, he or his team has to come up with it and, you know, email it out and he'll usually CC the full board. And I need this data on X, Y and Z. And then, you know, a week later goes email out to us. And I'm like, what is this? You can ask for this, but apparently somebody asked for it, right? And so in, in, and that's kind of to Christine's point, and it's happening on meetings sometimes. I would say we don't ever, I, I, I don't think the board at the meeting say, we need this right now, want to know, it says that's getting right now, but we do. Individuals do, uh, we do request it for, you know, referrals to committee or the next superintendent report, um.
And, and that gets back to the superintendent being comfortable saying, this is beyond the scope of just pulling out a document. It is going to involve twenty hours of somebody's time or whatever. I'm going to have to put someone on it and this is what they won't be able to accomplish. If the board wants this data, we'll be happy to provide it, but it's not that we're at the beck and call of nine different individuals that the board says, because he works for the collective board who makes decisions through voting. The board votes to make that operators work, then that becomes its work. That's a hard one because sometimes it is information that's readily available and, and that's like almost a case by case thing of when, when does it become a request? Maybe it's a burdensome request, but it's still reasonable. Or does it become something more? He has to be able to let you know when you've crossed that line and it's something more. We have to, for this to happen, we have to use resources that we didn't plan on or whatever, but or we might have to hire something or pay, pay for something to have this done. That shouldn't be the ability of nine, any one of nine do that, that, that that sometimes rises to the level of a board decision. But I think it was, it's definitely fair to say, we never assume it should be provided down, not because unless something you've had the paperwork right in front of you, you're not going to.
Now you say that and Miss Perry says something like that. I really don't like with something, we know that we talk about this. Things at last minute as request, I'm not going with that. Why? Because sometimes our staff, let's say request one of the board members or the chair ask for something for the next meeting or last minute or few hours before the meeting. I'm not agreeing with that. Why? Because the reason we have to discuss, we have to read it to be sure to bring it to the committee or bring it to the whole board. Second, our staff, every staff, they have a lot of things to do. So sometimes they have to stop what they're doing. Put it on the side, be behind that work to focus and bring us what we need. And I, I, I really don't like that. I don't, and either, so when we talk about this, let's say we have a meeting tonight and then it's a five o'clock and we had the, you know, order of information, three or four o'clock. And I'm not concerned, we have the table. We have table because we don't have the time. I, this is the thing that I, I don't, I don't like. Things happen three or four hours before. Or one of the chairs asked for information less of, say forty-eight hours, you know? So I already saw from Miss Perry, said you have to do something that the same way we post in, um, in the Kidda Kirk. Forty-eight hours, if the board member doesn't send that forty-eight hours and you send it, it's in twenty-four hours or twenty hours, ten hours. Deny it because I know our staff is doing another thing with Dr. Avery and I don't like things we be behind, you know, we, I know our staff, they do amazing job. They always stay on the top, they never say no to us. But guess what? They're human, just like us. So I, I always say that.
And that, that raises another question because, um, my assumption is that the questions are going either through the chair to the superintendent or to the superintendent.
Sometimes it comes directly to staff members.
That is not necessarily a good practice.
No.
Um, to one person, unless Dr. Avery says, no, I've heard that. Um, he, if you had a specific question, he could say, for that specificity, I recommend you talk to someone. So I'll let him know you're going to call. But that's his decision on whether you talk to another staff member or not. He needs to know what you're, what you need to know. So that he is prepared to help you move. And, and it isn't even, I need to know this, it's really, what is he trying to accomplish and what is it that you're worried about? Let me find data that will help you understand. And that's, he can't know that those questions are arising if you go into staff. You know, unless they come back and say, I got a call from Mr. Treyberg, he wanted blah, 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 blah. And I dropped everything that I provided it, but if you didn't know that, then you're wondering why didn't he get his other work done because he was doing something else for somebody else. So I, there should be a protocol in place for questions and it can be different, different districts, but a district the size of Bridgeport, it shouldn't be just do whatever you want. I mean, there, there should be some control over who talks to who. It's not that you're not allowed to ask a question, it's just that you have to ask the question to the appropriate channels. And as a former superintendent, I'm, I'm betting you agree. Christine, your hand is up again. Oh, actually, no, Christine, I'm sorry, Robert's had his hand up like three or four times and I keep jumping over him. So I'm going to ask him to speak and then I'll get to you. I apologize.
Yeah, just, even if this is my committee, I sort of was hoping that when I was out of the room, you'd wait until I came back, but, um, we're not dealing with a lot of contracts anymore. And so I want to be clear, I, I, I don't know why that was on your list.
No, it's on the list that, um, I guess the policy committee has created on the, on the, on the table. Added on to here.
This is what I have to do, this. Oh, okay.
I didn't have anything from the board.
I don't know where that came from, you know, because I'm not dealing with contracts. It, it's not what we're dealing with in my committee.
Um, well, that good question was only, what do you do in the committee? And that seemed to be one of the things that was under discussion, but it wasn't necessary. In fact, I think Jody said it's a comment that's not really appropriate.
Right, Jody made that comment, but I was thinking, we don't, um, um, so, yeah.
Well, I hand your book and keep going.
Yeah, I just, I just
I thought, okay, I okay, well, so I want to say that and then, um, I, I just, I don't disagree and I, we did, I did hear in the prior trainings about PAC PTSO. And Albert's down with the room, so I wanted to say this in front of Albert. Albert has a huge passion obviously for PAC PTSO because of his own personal history. Um, but we are backing away from our involvement. It was a huge mess last year that we inherited mid-year. Um, because the money wasn't being spent. And so that was what we were primarily looking at was why isn't the money being spent? Um, and now what we were trying to do was to figure that out and make sure systems were set up to ensure that it was being spent and that it was, so that we ended the year, one, spending as much as needed to be spent because it had ramifications for the next year. And two, um, setting it up so that we started the next year on right and we have. And hopefully that's the end of our, you know, and to the extent that he's a resource because of his extensive experience, that involvement is sort of not my committee as much as his.
He's an asset.
He's an asset. Um, so there is now, there are now systems in place. It's being handled extraordinarily well by the administration. I'm hoping that we're not if that's sort of like, oh, so as we talk
You're starting right. As we talked about at the beginning of the meeting, there were vacuums and sometimes boards or committees had to come in and take the place of, to fill that vacuum, but that vacuum no longer exists.
I think that's fairly inaccurate description. Would you not agree? I think, yes. So we're now trying to
So, but if we talk about our, if we talk about our wish list of what committees should be doing, we don't want that.
Right, we are, we are, we are avoiding that, um, because it has been fixed. Um, hopefully, and we don't have to be involved, um, it, you know, other than, so.
Okay, so now I have Christine.
I do agree, we do agree on that one and we have hopefully taken proper steps. And it's the administration is dealing with it now as it should be. Um, and the board is, is uninvolved.
Chop one up, but Christine.
Yeah, I, I just have inquiry, especially as we're bringing up assets or, or passion. Um, uh, my inquiry is regarding, and I'm just going to create a hypothetical so no one can feel a particular type of way. Uh, but if there's a particular agenda item and let's say, um, the CFO has made some recommendations. But then one board member hypothetically decides to put forward a, a specific job for elimination and, and that's not what's been recommended, it's not been what's discussed. And it's happening in real time during the committee meeting. Uh, do you have any points with regard to that? I, I, my concern for the board going forward um, is going off the rails, um, and, and not taking the time for whoever is the superintendent or whoever's the CFO. Um, and the administrative leadership's considerations and recommendations going forward and on the committee level. Um, making specific targets and attacks because in the past, and I know this is about moving forward, but I, I, I remember being told, oh, it's one particular board member, but I, I've seen in, yeah, hindsight, right? That, yeah, there are a lot of, um, problems with board members threatening individuals on their specific jobs. Or talking about, um, employees in their positions being eliminated. Um, adding things to, on a committee level that wasn't suggested or advised by the leadership. And I, I just want to know what to do in those situations because it, it'll be good to know.
And Joe.
Um, again, from, from my experience, um, and, and these issues are board issues, board decisions. So, um, again, with my previous district, there was a finance committee, the finance committee. Let's just talk about the budget process. The, the full board, the, as a superintendent, I would, I would do, um, my, I refer to as a drop and run. I, I would, um, there would be one night in, in January where I would um, share with the full board my budget presentation and it would talk about programs and my, my goals and goals of the district, board goals and identify where my recommendations, the superintendent recommendations for the budget. And then, and then I would provide the board, um, my budget plan. And then, and then the board would say, o- over the next four weeks or five weeks, the finance committee will review the superintendent's recommended budget. Um, object code by object code, line by line, to make recommendations to the full board as to, um, it's, it's recommendations on adopting the board's budget. And so it would make, it would, it would, it would probably change some of my numbers. It would cut the electricity account. It may change, make recommendations for staffing changes. But it would be recommendations that would go to the full board for consideration when the board comes to adopt the budget. That then, it would then move on to the legislative council for its, or to the mayor's office for its consideration, et cetera, and become the board's budget. So there may be recommendations from the finance committee, but they're only recommendations that would then be vetted through the full board in determining what its budget is going to be as a board budget recommendation. And then it would come out, that's how that would proceed. And then the board would have to be really careful not to, and the superintendent would have to be careful. and the superintendents would have to be careful at this point, not to, not to identify specific people in the budget, but just talk about those things more generally. Like, we will make a reduction in the, uh, mental health um, staffing. Uh, we'll make a recommendation to reduce one high school teacher or five paras, or, you know, make those kinds of broad recommendations, but they would be vetted by the full board as it adopts, considers adopting its full budget, and ultimately would have to get a majority vote to get, to go through. So some of those recommendations may be, um, um, considered and, and, and part of the board's full adoption, or they may be, um, as was often the case with my budgets, um, they, the board would vote against, um, some recommendations I made and in adopting this budget.
Can I just ask, um, so can a committee, in the middle of committee, add items to them? And that, that's, that's the, I think that's kind of what, um, Christine was alluding to, is that. By individual.
Um, well, still a.
Adding a specific individual or wrong that wasn't previously discussed or vetted.
I am, and we added to the, a committee.
Um, usually, a, a committee meeting would begin with, are there, uh, the committee chair asking with, with the administrator at the meeting as well, saying, are there any additions that you'd like to make to this agenda, any additions to this agenda? And, and, and the superintendent may say, yeah, just something came up recently, I'd like to add, I think it'd be good to add this to the agenda, um, tonight. Um, so it would be added to the agenda, or, or the chair may decide.
And if it's a broader subject like personnel, then making a motion or bringing something to the, to the agenda specifically on personnel is really not out of a danger. It gets, when it gets into readily identifying a person though, they have to be noticed in writing if they're going to be discussed, and if they're not noticed in writing that they're being discussed, that's an MOI violation. And if you did render a decision based on that conversation, that might be overturned by the commission later.
Yeah.
I don't want to. Do your talk.
It's really, it's.
That's where I'd be very concerned.
At any meeting, at any committee meeting, to, to just bring up a topic that, that could be traceable to a person, a staff member, is really, is really something you really should avoid with, with all intentions.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you. That, that specifically answers my hypothetical that I just can't bring up uh, Bob Smith's position randomly, it has to go through the process.
And, and, and when, when it becomes identifiable to Bob Smith, he needs to be notified, um, prior to the board having that discussion.
Yeah. Thank you.
Um, so I just wanted to chat about two things. So I've been, I'm part of the policy committee, and I've been actually working quite extensively on developing content around the committees based on different discussions that we've had from the board, um, with different conversations with board members. I will say, I am taking notes during this meeting so that then I can work, um, with Dr. Avery's team as well, incorporating those in. Um, I did have an idea and a thought about the finance committee, so I'm not sure if we wanted to get away from instruction and support services, um, about finance.
Well, given it's eight now, um, I do want to make sure that we don't lose track of where we are, so, um, it might not be a bad idea. Um, before I do that, Joe has his hand up, and then we'll, well, actually, you want, why don't you share your thought on finance, and then we can go to Josh.
So with the finance committee, a lot of the content that's shared during that meeting is also reshared during the larger board meeting. So I was thinking to save time, both on the cabinet level, board level, why don't we just make that meeting a meeting of the whole, just like personnel?
Some board, well, I know our board at budget time treated budget as, or finance as a committee of the whole. Um, I'm not sure that that's something you'd have to discuss, because it does mean more people being required to be there, um, for a core, because they'd have to worry about the core. But, um, the idea of, let's put it down.
And it's one of those areas where as a committee, again, the way I've worked with my finance, board finance committees, it was an opportunity for them to kind of drill down on some of the accounts and, and not, and, and then make recommendations to the full board, and we present that this is the number of these transfers that were made, and we approve, we recommend the board fully, you know, approve this, these acts. Um, we also looked at the quarterly statements and, and our budget is, um, spent up to the point where it should be spent at this time of year, and things are working really well, there's some pressure in the special ed account, but we're taking these, the, the administration is taking these steps to ameliorate some of those issues. So it, it really was, um, and, and actually, when, around budget time, it was, we didn't have the board, the full board, having deliberations over the various object codes. It was the finance committee that did it. And then we'd make recommendations to the full board on, on what would be adopted in the budget. But that's just how it was done in my district. We've done differently.
Okay, Joe.
Yes, I, 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 I just want to make sure we're absolutely clear, because we're heading into a period of time where we may have to make an additional twenty million dollars in budget cuts in next, next fiscal year, that when the agenda items come to us on finance committee or before the, before the full hold, they're noted as budget gap elimination or um, additional position recommendations. And it's not out of the scope of the board's duty to suggest amendments or substitutions to the superintendent's and the staff's recommendations and implement those at the meeting. And I have never heard anybody's names mentioned. There's positions, some positions have maybe only one person in them. But, uh, they're noted on the agenda, if say, nobody, nobody get offended, we're not talking about you right now, this is just an example. Director of Personnel versus, is put on there, and there's a substitution made to maybe eliminate the Director of Homeless Services, which we don't have, in place of that position. And then it gets discussed and fully vetted, and then if a decision is made, then the employee is brought into the conversation. So we do have the ability, the budget is ours on the state statute, we are responsible for it one hundred percent. It's not the superintendent's budget to drop on the table, not that Dr. Avery would do that, and just leave it to us. It's for us to vet, amend, change, discuss, and come up with the best thing after thorough collaboration and everybody's ideas considered. And the final product will be decided by a majority, supermajority, or whatever have you. Is that a correct assessment?
Yeah, well, overall, it's a correct assessment. Again, I, I think when you're talking about people's jobs and livelihood, I think you just, it's not what you do, it's how you do it. And, and again, I would, i- if, if I, as a superintendent, I would expect my, my board chair or board member who had certain questions or, or was gonna make certain recommendations, that I would at least be aware of it, and it would be, be vetted and discussed, or wouldn't just come as, as a bomb in a meeting.
Yeah, sometimes that's a little difficult to do when agendas are posted twenty-four hours ahead of time, so. That's just that, and the first chance to get to see it is at the meeting itself.
Yeah, okay, I just, I think sensitivity is, is warranted, and again, just being aware that when you're talking about, um, a person who has this one position, there's this one person in that position, you're publicly disclosing that, that you're recommending that a person loses his job or her job. I, I, again, I think it just be, it needs to be thought out and, and considered in a way that's going to be, um, look good that the board is doing its due diligence, it's doing its appropriate deliberations, it's taking its role as fiscal, you know, the fiscal agent of the district seriously. Um, so it just, I just requires a lot of thought and deliberation. That's in my view.
Uh, yeah, um, I want to add, um, for instructions, support services, there is the, the variety of uh, additional programs that we have, um, that we're looking at too. So as an example, the athletic director was in the last meeting to look at the athletic programs, you know, and what we were doing with them, it was a topic began last spring. So we were trying to evaluate that, review it throughout the year, uh, as we did with the, um, and progress recently, when we got those test scores. So it's an ongoing discussion throughout the year uh, as we develop a, a middle school sports program. So, you know, that kind of stuff is part of what we just.
And there's some, and one of the top thoughts was, are there anything we can pull off? And I'm not hearing a lot. Some of them you've already identified, it's either they're gone or going. But some of these things are really.
Support services, you know, there's the support services of, uh, you know, counseling and, and social work and that type of stuff. But there's also the, um, liking on the word right now, it's, it's the latest, um, the it's, it's support arts, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, I, I use the term loosely, non-academic subjects, which, you know, in my mind, there, that is another term.
You know, by the way, it's rated orange. It is another term. It'll come to me and within a pop, and then, and then I, you know, I wanted to say that one of the problems that we're having was looking at recent is that we remember in, this past winter, we were dealing with two budgets. We were putting together a budget and we were fixing a budget at the same time. Um, and, you know, some things could have been handled better, I'm sure, but that is what we were doing. We were trimming and a budget that we found out was ten million dollars more than we thought it was, and it was already too much. So
The reality got in the way.
Things weren't handled as well as they could have been because the state was breathing down our neck, and we were trying to trim the current year's budget, the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, and set the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six at the same time. And so uh, now that we are just in a plain ordinary pickle, um, we are working on a, a, you know, Dr. Avery and, and the CFO have laid out a timetable. It would have us beginning to think about doing things normally. Um, like you just laid out, Jody, of looking at a budget in January and trying to figure out how we can do it, we, without the resources. So hopefully, we'll do that in a more humane way and, and better than.
So some of the, I can be currently discussing our finance committee, um, and then anybody that, um, the contracts. Physical condition for.
Fiscal.
Condition.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Um, be good.
I'm looking at older from this year, um, exponential reports for specific schools.
Physical.
Exponential, um. Oh, that's not.
Expenditures.
Exponential reports to specific schools.
Fiscal.
Yeah. Um, but capital plans for, for the facilities. Obviously, the budget. Budget gap.
Caps.
Anything related to the budget gap. Those are the major items. Yeah. Contracts, both personnel and just procurement contracts.
Well, um. What we're doing on the brand.
We, we brought grants before the board, too, before the finance committee grants.
Well, just a review, we're ongoing, because I know we're doing, uh, we're, we're doing more to secure more grants. And so, so ongoing. So are you reviewing updates?
My, is my question appropriate?
I'm asking.
It would be.
Because I know you're making more, you, you organized it in a better way, and you're doing a better effort. To, to, so.
And it was brought to the board's attention that it was a need, and so if you're getting report back, and in fact, we are taking.
They've taken steps to do that, yeah.
Um. Yes, I'm just, what, I'm trying to pinpoint is, because that's like a global issue of concern. Seems very appropriate to have a conversation about that. Now, do you recommend or take any action based on that, or it's just receive, report and receive and move on?
A lot of time, you, you refer to the full board, any contracts, all, all these things are usually, like.
Because you have to vote to approve certain things, and so the committee would forward that to the board.
Yeah. For both of these action blocks.
This one's gonna be, well, it's huge, but it's, I, I'm wondering how much of it is like the immediate facility discussions versus the long-term planning, which I know is like personally foremost on all of your minds right now.
It's, it's, it's a bit of both. Um, but it's also something, and we're talking about facilities for those online, um, it's also something that, firstly, I think, based on the audit that we have, should fall under the finance. Because there's a lot of facilities that have to do with finance, and um, there's like a disconnect right now, or her, the audit builds, there's a disconnect between what facilities spending versus what our CFO knows about. I, I kind of think that. I think you mentioned earlier, like operations, which included, um, facilities, I think you mentioned that, yeah, but personally, I think that that any facility really get issued should go, most facilities should go to finance. That's my personal.
Yeah, we had a, a finance committee that did all facilities, all personnel, and, um, any other types of operational decisions. Um, and there's always a connection between them, and for instance, like you're saying, there's some of these things that there's a direct link, but by having two different committees, you're, I mean, I could see one being an ad hoc, long-term committee looking at the future versus sort of the operational part of it, which blends, it's directly a result of budget and all those other implications as well.
Do you think a better title you might want to consider would be something like operational management? Because it's really.
Covers everything.
Managing operations, you're looking at financial, you have buildings and short-term, long-term. Planning.
I'm, I'm gonna ask you this question though, because I'm, when I hear the word management, the many thing is, boards don't manage it, government.
Yeah.
And so I, I agree that that's the correct term, but I'm wondering if there's wording that doesn't.
Operational.
There is operations.
Operations.
Maybe, maybe it's operations that really guides the finance rather than buying a, buying the footages.
Yeah, I think one of the goals you need to look at as you move forward is that you're not making decisions on funding based on funding needs, that you're making them based on operations needs.
Yeah.
So we're not looking at person, and, and I know you have to get there, you're not there. But you stop looking at, we have to cut four positions, but rather, we have to change the way we do business in this particular area, which may mean we can do it more effectively and more efficiently, or use a different department. So you're making operational decisions versus budget decisions. It has the impact. I don't think you could be there yet because you have such an overwhelming budget complex right now. That, that may be something long-term, but you're writing policy for the long-term. I mean, that should be the goal of changing your policies, is what do we want to, not necessarily what are we dealing with right now. We may change what we do to meet that future, but in my mind, policy should reflect what we want to do, not what we're doing.
I think some other thing we've had with the facilities, we've also brought before mine, so we're doing this thing twice, so we'll get the capital plan involved.
Mm-hmm.
And so, that's where we have to done see something.
Right.
And then it goes before the full board, and so three times you're seeing the capital plan, right?
Hmm.
Um, and so if it was just an operation, maybe we just see it all at once and really get into it. Um, and then your staff doesn't have to do it three times.
Right.
Or one, two, or three.
Yeah.
Lots of talk about nutrition and facilities. Department, to bring up those matters, be focused, maybe. Down the Dr. Avery's dorm, there's a chart that falls under financial. Down the Dr. Dory Dormageon chart that falls under finance and rules.
Well, if that fell under operation, it would still.
Be in one, yeah.
Yeah, be in one. What what's refreshing to me a little bit is the things you're talking about, except for a few that you noted are going. Because we knew we, you know, we had to, but we don't really think it's appropriate. We're gonna change that. I haven't heard a lot of stuff that you can offload. That there might be some areas within these that you could probably depend on administration, do a little more, do a little less, but in general. These are all very reasonable things for the board to be looking at. I think how you structure the committees to make that happen is gonna be the question or or the goal. Um, but I I don't.
So it sounds like we have three committees. We have operations, instructions and support services and policy.
Yeah, mentioning those spots, that's a fun, but I'm blowing other choose to talk about it.
What are the other two? Is it is it something that the board?
That maybe you just. You have a quality.
Personnel is gonna be in that, I think it will. Yeah.
That was the best one.
But that's forward.
Well, no.
Oh, because facilities, facilities was gonna be right.
I guess I'd like to kick on a little bit more on the personnel, because it seems to me. That a lot of personnel issues would be under operations, because it's part of, you know, I consider that's part budget, part finance, part operations. When you're getting into specific, um. Sort of like more ad hoc things, like we have to have this committee to do a specific task. To me, that might be a little bit different. Maybe that's still an ad hoc, but I don't count that as part of your. Committees, committee structure, ad hocs have a purpose and then they go away.
I think it was simply the the times in which the board actually interviews.
Yeah.
Which were high level administrative positions. Um, and they go into executive session. So instead of having the personnel committee members, those three people on that committee or. Could have been more. But instead of having that, letting any board member and have the whole board available to go into executive session to do the interviews. Right or wrong, that was the thought. You know, so that was the point of it, not anything else.
Okay, so.
Think of, so for those very limited occasions, they're very limited. When you're interviewing at that level. To do it, not not for. But you might think of other personnel related matters. That would be in in an operations committee. That makes sense.
Did you hear?
Yes, I have a question now that Mr. Travers said. That the policy personnel, that's a question, maybe you can help with that. Had to, um, the committee had to interview the candidates whoever is coming to work for BOA. Because I know they have to go through that's. You know, on board is Dr. Avery, but before come to the committee, they interview with others again the director, you know, so that his cabinet. They they have to, so that's a question for me.
Well, I I guess the quote, cause it's I understand your process. You're not doing a final interview from the recommendation, the superintendent. You're interviewing multiple candidates and then you're deciding who to hire. No.
Then recommend, yeah?
Somebody can.
Okay, no, so the the what I understand to what's been happening for you very was on paper, policy by law.
Right.
Suggestion is the superintendent. Bring forward two to five candidates for that individual position. And the policy and the personnel committee, and it was two together. Uh, interview those people, then we make a recommendation on those candidates. And he decides the hiring decisions are the superintendent, not the the committee.
And our current, our current policies are talking to him, he just said two to five, but another policy says three people, a minimum of three people. So right now, that's something that definitely have to work on, like our our personnel, like our hiring. Policy in general, um, to really solidify, because we do have, uh, you know, the three thousand series and I believe in the. Just see, I think I'm off the top of my head, but there's two different, um, policy not in.
See, I I I with one exception, I I it might be necessary to interview up to, let's say, two or three.
Yeah.
But if your superintendent has somebody that's perfect for the job, why go through three? I I and then again, it's your policy, your decision. Um, but I don't want to restrict my superintendent. And actually, I've seen that in practice, because we had this, we had three candidates for an elementary principal. Superintendent had a clear say, we want, I want this young man to be the principal. And we had two others. Who, um, one was would have been exceptional, except he was high school level and he really had a lot of elementary experience. We eventually hired him for the high school later. But the third person wrote grants for the district. She had been in the district fifteen years. Um, knew nothing about instruction. She had never been a classroom teacher, wrote grants. So we interviewed all three and the superintendent was very clear, this person is only here because she's been in the district fifteen years. I owed her an interview. She's not my recommendation, wing, wing, nudge, nudge. I mean, he made it as clear as possible that it was a courtesy to her, but he was not supposed, she had a serious contempt. At two o'clock in the morning, when we were done debating this, guess what we had? The school was chaos for two years and every time something erupted in the school, we'd go to the superintendent and say, what's going on? You hired her, I didn't. I never want to give that power to somebody else again. I want the superintendent. If you're gonna live and die by that person, you need to be able to stand behind them. So that's the only place I would say. Exactly. So if I have somebody that I truly believe is the right person. I have an obligation, I think, to bring that one candidate to you, you still can interview and you can say. No, what? Not not my choice. Um, that then again, that's up to how you, you know, work yourself through. But if. I think you limit yourselves, especially if it's a specialty area where there's not a lot of people looking for work. How long do you wait? I think this happened recently, if I'm not mistaken, where you had to potentially lose somebody because you didn't have enough. So I think that's a hamstring.
Well, we're we're gonna have the the time to get everybody together and that person had a note to offer and that person went somewhere else where. If that person were quickly acted upon and hired, that person would be working for you. So that's being those are practicalities you have to consider with this.
Albert, then Joe.
Yeah, but it's it's, you know, I'm saying, because it's my opinion, it's the way I see it, it's so many years, it's always. That whoever come, of course, the district or his cabinet, where his cabinet. Interview that person, you know, for many hours and then they go to the committee. Another many hours again, and then come to Dr. Let's say in the medium. So why it have to be coming to the committee? Or it's okay, Vegas second says made the decision and, you know, talk to that there and this is the person.
Was acceptable and and some of it's past practice. I mean, you decide how you the process you want, but the reality is. Um, even there are some points that vote on a final hiring central office level, a lot don't. But you get to say, bring us a person. Bring us a person you are most comfortable with and you believe can do the job. And then it's up to your practice, whether you would actually approve that or just say, okay, we we're comfortable, go for it.
Um, but statutorily, you're required to, as a board, to appoint that person.
Okay, so.
So you would you are required to appoint, but you can do that based on the recommendation of the superintendent to appoint.
You don't have to interview some, it's a courtesy, again, to know them, feel comfortable, but, um. And if you're going to appoint, it probably is a good idea to have that interview, but, um, you know, I think it's a different thing when you're instead of going to a shopping list. I just interviewed four roofers for my house. I am so confused.
All right, thank you.
Go.
Yes, I was, I'd like to back up for a minute, because, um. Sounds like we are discussing merging facilities and finance, which was. Done before to disastrous results. We've got a facilities master plan with. Hundreds, basically hundreds of projects. In the jumper. And as you know, the budget is already a full time process. And as far as being duplicative, it doesn't have to be duplicative. There's nothing that says that. A building plan once approved. That with the discussion that the contract was looked at in one committee. That has to go to another committee to do the contract. That's one of the reasons that the contracts. Um, to Mr. Travers' point earlier. Was separated out. The particular committee with the expertise in that subject area. Would be looking at the contracts. Facilities would look at a facilities contract. Finance would look at a catch off for all contracts that didn't get caught anywhere else. Uh, teaching and learning, ISS would look at, um. Textbook contracts, it would look at all this stuff, vetting those with in its area area of expertise and then presenting it to the full board. So it doesn't necessarily have to be that it's a teaching contract. That they look at it, they vet the program and say, oh, this is great. And then it has to come to finance to vet the contract again. No, it can move to the full board from teaching and learning. It doesn't have to do that. I highly, highly strongly recommend, since it has failed in the past, that we do not merge. Finance and facilities, especially with the facilities master plan to still be vetted, community forums to be held. And finance with twenty million dollars, possible budget cuts coming up next year. Merging them will be a very, very bad idea and having one person. Chair that committee and setting the agenda items for all those committees would be too much of a concentration of power. We. Very scary road to go down again after we failed on that road once before. Thank you.
Do you think so? Like you had mentioned that, um, I'm not sure if you've heard this, but. There's some facilities really likely to be brought before the finance committee versus long term that could be an ad hoc.
Well, that's what I, that's what I'm thinking here, um, that anything to do with like the master plan.
Can be.
And I would consider that.
It's not something that we have to be on regularly any. Right now, we we will be in the near future, but in general, um, and then, um. He said something else. All the one. Let somebody else speak.
Red Sox ahead.
Red Sox.
Two to one.
We have to, I need to shake it off.
So so, um.
I heard you mention baseball at the beginning of the meeting. Your Sox.
Oh. Sure.
So I I guess what I'd like to sort of summarize where we are beside, are we sort of have we hit the wall for tonight? Or or is there something else we need to accomplish before we're done?
What what can we refer or are items referred to committee? So. Is it, you know, one board member might want, like they they really sent it with a local nonprofit and I want presentation at the support service about that. Nonprofit. Can that be a referral or the referral of the board to me at the next board meeting, ready for getting, will we have our referral reports? Um, you know, uh, looking at, so, but I want, I want this, um, this on the agenda. And so is it an automatic got it? Or is it other full board saying, well, maybe I have to go on that agenda.
Well, I I I think to Joe's point earlier, too much power by whoever creates the agenda. And I guess that would be if the rule is anybody wants something on the agenda, it just automatically happens, same chaos. So I think somehow, um. Either the simplest thing would be, if well, he said that there's this program, I'd really like to have a presentation on at the committee. That I would think the chair could say, if there's no object from the board, it'll be, um, put on a future subcommittee agenda. Um, and not necessarily the next one, but a future, then that's up to the chair, working with the superintendent to think of when can we schedule it, what what is worth it? Um, if there's any controversy over an issue, it might be, um, we have a request for this to go to the budget committee, for example, or the operations committee, for example. Um, are there objections? And if there's none, it can be, and and if there are, then let's bring it to a vote. And then it's the vote, the board would vote to say, yes, we lose this to that operations committee for discuss future discussion. Um, it's just that you don't want to consolidate the nine different people get to choose what happens on nine different agendas. Um, or three, even three different agendas, because that's even worse, you know, that's. Nine times three, eighteen potential agenda topics for three meetings. And who's gonna have to make all that happen? It could get very confusing. So I think filtering it through the board and and as I say, it's working well. And if we have. Back to this one idea, we trust our chair to be, um, effective in helping make these agendas work properly. Then it should just be a matter of, we'd like to see this, the chair can say, with no objections, we're gonna do that, that'd be referred to the committee. If there are objections, we can vote.
I think your question has to, the board's role in assigning committees, right?
Agenda, like.
So so who's who's job is it for the policy committee, for example, to determine what policies they're going to update? Should it be a board decision? Should it be the chair's decision? Should it be the policies? Here's decision, or should it be a collaboration? Right, so. Look, again, I I my my general thought is that that way it's worked successfully, from my experience, is that the board. Understands that, for example, the superintendent gives a report and there's a there's new legislation, we just got a cave update. We need to get these three mandated policies updated. So, um, so. There might be a board vote or it could be the chair saying, I'd like to refer this, these three mandated policy revisions to the policy committee to their first review. And then the policy committee would then take that as being charged to review those policies and come back with a. Um, recommendation for policy adoption.
See, I think the question will differ, because I don't disagree with you. I guess the question is, if somebody comes up with something. Unique to a situation, then isn't part of the the normal agenda of of the committee, like a presentation by a group or. Um, a new program that they've heard about or whatever. I think there needs to be some collaboration with the chair to see that it gets the board to the committee. I think things like policy to some extent, that's gonna be driven by what central office has been working on, what CAPE has sent you. Um, as they do their work, um, or it might be, you know, we'd like to talk about this. Well, we know that. This is coming up in April, and so maybe it's appropriate for the subcommittee to discuss it in April, or it's gonna do before the full board in April, so maybe it doesn't make sense, but. Um, I I think I'm more concerned about the wild card type of things, if you excuse the pun.
The.
Um, you know, the things that just, I want to talk about this or I want to talk about that. I don't, even the committee chair to some extent. Shouldn't have that type of authority, because when you say, I want to do this. You're also saying to the superintendent, I want you to do this. And. I think since the superintendent works for the entire board, that if there's change in directive, that the directive should be coming from the board.
And the sub and the committee works for the board, the full board. It's the board's determination as to what the subcommittees are and what their charges are, and it's doing the work on the full board.
But the immediate practice. Is none of this. That's dysfunctional.
So what you're currently doing right now is not what we're suggesting is the best.
This is anybody can refer something to a committee.
Right.
At any time.
Right.
And. And then I can get an email. I can get, you know, at a board meeting at the end of my reports, somebody, you know, the chair says an email referrals to the committee and anybody can say, yeah. I want to refer this, this, this and this. And I write it down or I say, please email that to me and. That you email it. Lovely.
No, you can't.
Why you're flapping your arm. It's it was impatient.
So I did not win that.
Put it down, just like finished. So I it just. And 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 so at any at any time, people can do this. And so it's, that's what it is right now. It's sort of open season on the committee. Um, and the chair, if right now, puts it on the agenda. Um, I, you know. I guess if there was something really outrageous, the chair could say, eh, you know, and I actually did say to Albert, Albert, do you mind if I put this off? I can take that item and he said, no, that's fine. Uh, and we did. So I, you know, that can happen, but essentially it's just. Um.
Blah blah west. That's my my blah blah blah, yeah.
Blah blah west. So I I think that we wanna be a little clearer about. Uh, it's not that the chair can do anything and then I'll get contacted by administrators. Um, do you mind if I put this on the agenda? Do you mind if I get, you know, I I need to refer this to your committee? Um, and it's like, yeah, sure, put it on. Yeah, sure, let's put.
Well, even there, and I guess if Dr. Avery was comfortable with his staff coming to the committee, otherwise based on him.
I would say they don't necessarily all tell you that they spoke to Dr. Avery.
I guess most of them have to.
I believe that to be the case, but occasionally I think somebody can come to me that have a certain way to learn about him.
So so when shared with you, that's practice and it's actually, I think we gotta tighten that up a little bit, is my point. That's the ultimate point here. So you're not defending the statutory practice.
No, I'm saying that we need to be a little clearer about how that works and.
I don't think the committee itself, like the bylaws themselves say, then we have to do the way we've been doing it.
I said that's practice.
But I think. I'm not even saying that we should be doing it that way. It's just, I think because of past practice.
Right, I'm just like.
We could probably just implement this on Monday. Do y'all agree with? This presentation. Committee or, you know.
Yeah, and again, as you're looking at future bylaws language, that's maybe one of the places you want to include some changes. You.
Yeah, I have my hand raised. I didn't wave, did I?
Okay. You were saying, but that's okay.
Yeah, I want to be sure of that.
That's sometimes.
I wanted to read that way. As soon as you say, I got you, buddy.
I wanted to read that way. I, as soon as you said, I got you, nobody can do that. And, and now that I have my hand up, um, respectfully, because I, again, I made a word. You said agenda. We, they have been talking about referrals. To me, that's two different things. I've been referred a lot of things. And I just don't put it on my agenda whenever it becomes, a lot of things happen because of laws and all that. So the policy is, is a whole different thing. But I've never expected, I was being, for me as, as a board member, that when I refer something, so to them, what they do with the referral as far as talking to Dr. Avery, talking to whatever head of that department might be or whatever it might be, I don't know how they work it. I just know mine is different because it's just, policy is just so specific, theirs is different, but I've never felt that I had an authority to put anything on the agenda. To my knowledge, the chair is the one that decides, every committee chair decides what is put in the agenda. And we meet with, for example, Danielle and we send it over to Dr. Avery. He approves it, if you have a problem with it, then he will say something or vice versa. Then we send it over to get signed and then it gets filed. Um, and then the chair, I know she does, she's the one that recreates her agenda. Nobody tells her what to put in the agenda. They speak, they do their thing. So I never felt that I had an authority to tell a person to put something on the agenda. I don't know how they all feel, but I want to say, so when you say agenda, I agree with you. Nobody should be putting agendas at the chair for a purpose. But it should be kind of like worked out with administration and all that. Referrals to me is just, is your staff, you know, can you get information about this? I would like to refer this to your committee. I said, okay, let's figure it out. That's how I look at it, how I've been managing ours.
So if we think of the word agenda now, I mean, that's the roadmap of our meeting. So if we're gonna have someone sitting at the meeting talking to us about something, that should be a topic on the agenda.
Absolutely. Oh, but I forget, but when they say referral, to me, the referral is not an agenda item, that, that, that you're telling them to put it on, that, that you.
It's required, yeah. Yeah, it's semantics, but yeah, if I can ask the board to talk about something through policy or finance or whatever, that's, that's just the request, referral or whatever, but it's not actionable until it's on the agenda. And I think that's what we're just saying, is from the board to the agenda, there needs to be a process to make sure that people aren't just ending up spending an hour, extra hour of beating, talking about something nobody plans on.
Rationality, yeah. So that's going back to a lot of the point earlier, about, we know what to expect. We were prepared to what's, what to expect. There's an overall rhyme or reason for the work we're all doing.
That's essentially, yeah. I mean, if you're referring something like me, that's the only way my committee does anything is at its meeting. And that's moving.
Yep.
So.
So we'll tie that up.
Yeah.
So I know in the interest of time, if they want to get like people's info on something else that the bylaw is not very clear and it's how many people are in the committee, um, it, it's, it's open, it actually has no suggestion at all. Right now, there's three people per committee and I just wanted to kind of put this out there. Are we okay with that number? Um, so is that the number we want to commit to in the bylaws?
I will say it's, it's, it's common practice, three is common practice in most districts I'm aware. It should be less than a four and, and, and four, you have an even number. So it might be hard to move things out of a committee with an even number. So three is, there's a rationality around three being a good number.
Yeah, and perfect. So, and then the last thing is if there's no referrals or no topics, I know we always say, hey, this committee meeting is meeting every Wednesday of the month, but if there's no topics, we need to be a little bit clearer on, hey, it will only meet as necessary and kind of wanted to make sure everyone is okay with that or wanted to debate it. Exactly. Don't want to have a meeting just because we, we say we have to.
Again, and this is just common practice, Bridgeport is, is Bridgeport, but a meeting, a meeting week is, that's a lot of meetings.
No, it's monthly.
It's a monthly meeting.
Monthly, the committee. Yeah, we've had this abundance of special meetings, but the, the committee meetings are monthly.
But if there's nothing to discuss, there's nothing, it's such a can cancel meeting.
In fact, the, the meeting is not established until there's a time, place and location of a time, date, time and location.
I will say that some committees do need, uh, they have a, a, like a.
A set time.
Every Wednesday at six, right? But there might also be a special meeting during the month.
Yeah, I think each committee should have a set period of time when it meets or the community expects it. But if there's nothing on the agenda to discuss that particular month, then, then.
I agree.
And I also would say that that has happened and then it's like calls a special meeting. So now we've got two of that committee meeting, you know, you have the meeting, we can twice a month or, or they'll have the meeting and then, you know, call it again later. And I know with finance, we've done it a few times because, because there's a law in finance.
Yeah.
But you know, there, other times, you know, it's something that wasn't brought before on this normal night, it was called for a special meeting. So like, I think really honing in on like, if your meeting is, let's say Tuesday, first Tuesday of the month, last Tuesday of, last Tuesday of month, your meeting should be last Tuesday of month, of the month, you know, unless you're like.
Unless the last Tuesday of the month is Christmas and we have on third Tuesday.
It's changed because there is a meeting and that we saw they'll, we'll try to do it. I mean, we've all worked it out with each other, I think, you know.
It's the fourth Wednesday.
Yeah, because we're, we're.
Thanksgiving Eve.
I think there's always, there's always gonna be a need for a special meeting, but I, I would, I would be up. One of the gauges of your success as a board is the, 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 the lessoning of the need for special meetings. And so the, so can things come up? You need to address it. You have a special meeting, but if you're having a lot of special meetings, you have to think about, what are we, what are we doing as a board? That warrants that number of special meetings? What aren't we covering in our own meetings? That's requiring these special meetings. What are we forecasting? Why aren't we predicting and anticipating? So I, I think that that's one of the, when you do your board, um, evaluation, that would be one of the metrics you might want to look at, the number of special meetings, when they occur and, and whether or not there are things you can do to eliminate some of the needs for that, because you're really, you're not, it's set, it establishes a lack of routines for your board, but it also signals to your community that you're operating on a a whimsical basis.
The other thing I would add too is there's nothing, in fact, I encourage you, as you have the, either special meetings or when your meetings start to get long, there's nothing wrong with saying, did we really have to have this on a board agenda? You know, what's the rationale for us having to make this decision? Why is it in front of us? Answer, very likely is appropriate, but you'll find that there, especially if you're calling special meetings, what, what, what caused us to have to meet tonight? Urgency board meeting tonight, we have to have something recommended or whatever. Okay, but you might start fighting yourself, saying, second guessing, did we really have to have that meeting? And then start thinking ahead to, as you look at other potential special meetings, is there a better way that this could be done? Is administration able to deal with this and then just report to us later, for example? It should be a learning process, you know, we, we, we don't just make a decision. And that's why I think bylaws, you don't want to be so prescriptive, then you tie yourself into a corner like you have to interview three or three to five.
Yeah.
And then you have the one and you're stuck. So it should, the policy should, and bylaws are a policy. It's a nine thousand section of your policy manual. Um, they should enable you, enable your administration, not restrict them as much as possible. It should, it should inspire not, uh, required compliance, basically. As much as you can. I feel like we hit a spot. I'm not sure if it's the right spot or not. I'm not sure if we accomplished everything you wanted to, but I hope this conversation helps you move forward with your bylaws and, and regarding committees and such. You have a lot to think about. But I, I did see some actionable things out of all this, potentially renaming them, um, moving some things around, uh, taking a couple of things off or sort of removing them from the list, although we've kind of basically stopped doing them as a committee. So I think it's helped.
Um, if, if maybe you forward to me, um, that, there's a, there's a work you gave us a few trainings ago and it what Christine asked, the role of the superintendent, his step, his responsibilities versus ours.
Yeah, yeah.
And that would be really helpful for us to, to refresh ourselves.
We have the CAPE cap document, that's like several pages, but that really articulates well the differences in responsibilities. Um, I'm sure that's.
That's a great scorecard to have with you when you're, when you're going over your bylaws.
Yeah.
It's really smart.
Yeah, I'll email that to you tomorrow.
No, I, I think we've seen it before, but I guess.
Doesn't hurt.
Yeah.
This time you're seeing it with a purpose.
Yeah.
Yeah. And a rationale. And so, good. All right.
Check the score one more time, two to one, red socks.
And I'll say one hundred and eight in scoring position.
All right, well, um, oh, I've seen another comment to this. Amen. Thank you guys. Have a nice day.